The next order of business is approval of the agenda. And I'll speak to that. I'll move to table item 11D. That's Slode Avenue vacation until, to a date and time uncertain. And approval of the remaining end items.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Pedori.
So I would like to let the Slode Avenue still remain on the agenda. I don't, I don't, I think it's important that we conclude that item. So I would like that to remain.
And I also will agree with the councilman.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. I'll agree to not pull that item.
And the reason that I moved to table the item is there's a number of outstanding items associated with the Slode Avenue vacation. The first and foremost one is the Coastal Commission has yet to hear an appeal on the project. But there's also several other items that are outstanding conditions for the, the final act of vacation of that street. So any other comment? Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And may the city manager, are we on the calendar for the Coastal Commission? Or what's the status of that?
Mayor Protem McAdams to the mayor, no, we do not have a date yet with the Coastal Commission.
So no idea, six months, a year, two years, any ballpark?
We, Mayor Protem McAdams, we don't know at this time. We have asked and when we are not aware, there has been some recent staffing changes at that office. And so we don't know at this point.
And so it's the last time the council tabled this item. Has there been any significant changes for a reason to be brought back to the agenda?
Yes, there have been. There have been discussions between the developers and the property owners on that street.
Okay, but aren't we constantly in negotiations and discussions with them anyways?
The city, no.
Okay, okay.
All right. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm ready to vote on that. Also, like as far as the agenda goes, to just put a request out for at our 8:00 PM break. If we are, if it, if our crystal ball shows that we're not going to get to 13B and C, that we, because I think they're going to be heavily interests, heavy interest from the public on those. So rather than folks have to stay up late, that we will contend at 8 o'clock so they know.
All right, we'll do an agenda check at 8 o'clock.
Okay, but otherwise I'm ready to vote on your motion.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Of those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I was an aye.
All right, the motion carries four to three with councilmembers Pedori, Tomlinson, and Emilio dissenting. All right, now we'll move on to the presentations. And we have a presentation for Mr. Crandall for 20 years of faithful service to the city of Pacific Grove.
So I think we have to kind of huddle around this microphone is kind of how we have to do it. I forgot to bring the handheld microphone that we used to use for this because we haven't done this in so long. So bear with me. One of the fun things that I get to do as your city manager is acknowledge our employees. And we have a lot of dedicated employees here at the city of Pacific Grove. Employees that have spent years, if not decades here, working to make the city better. And with me tonight is Will Crandall, who has been a city employee for the last 20s. And that's a remarkable achievement, not only for the city of Pacific Grove, but really for any job, any industry. So I'd like to embarrass Will a little bit by saying a few words about him. We've also brought up our Public Works Director. Oh, thank you, Ms. Candell, who also will have some words. And then, of course, Will, we'd like to hear from you as well. So a little bit about Will that you may or may not know. Will started in 2002 as a Pacific Grove Reserve firefighter. And as a reserve, Will worked firefighter shifts and was dispatched outside the county numerous times as a wildland firefighter representing Pacific Grove. In 2005, Will was hired as a full-time employee in the Public Works Mechanical while still serving as a reserve firefighter. In 2008, Will concluded his time as a reserve firefighter and became the lead mechanic for all fire apparatus that the city owns and operates, which is something that he still does today. Much to your chagrin, Pravro. In addition to his daily duties described, he manages our city fuel system, all the reporting requirements for the city's generators, and he performs all of the Department of Transportation inspections for the city's large equipment. So before we hand it over to Will, I'd like to bring up Mr. Go to say a couple of words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. So thank you, Mr. Harvey and Will. Congratulations on your last part with the city. That's a tough day. No mechanic, so I went to Public Works and I said, who did come up here with the president's team? Came down to the yard, started looking at our beach, my hall. That's the dedication that Will still shows to pay. And for that, we should get the president by the way.
Pedori, please. Yes.
Our next on agenda is proclamation and recognition of National Public Works Week. And we have some public works folks here. If you want to wave or stand or however, so this, this is also for you. And I'll paraphrase some of this proclamation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to our community, to the health, safety, and wellbeing of the, of the people of the community. And these facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from our city government and other, obviously, other government agencies. And whereas in the public interest of citizens, civic leaders in California to gain knowledge of what they, what public works does and the importance of public works in maintaining our community. Whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Weeks, sponsored by American Public Works Association. It now resolved, I, Bill Peak, Mayor of Pacific Grove, with my colleagues to hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to 21st as National Public Works Week and urge people in the community to join me in applauding the dedication of our public works employees here in Pacific Grove. Thank you very much for being here too. All right, next we'll work on, go on to council and staff announcements. We had a closed session meeting yesterday on city attorney employment, and there is no reportable action. We had a closed session meeting earlier today. Mr. Laredo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to members of the council. And the council did meet at 5:00 PM on the one matter of pending litigation, Michael Gonzalez versus City of Pacific Grove, Chief Matt Alone and City Manager Harvey. The council and other defendants did with its defense counsel, Michael Christian from the firm Jackson and Lewis. The council received a status report on the case and also reviewed procedural issues and provided general direction, but no specific reportable action was taken. That concludes my, oh, it's the second closed session item. Due to time and the length of this agenda, that matter was not able to be considered. And a motion was made by Councilman Smith and by Councilman McAdams to continue that to a time and date uncertain, but not this evening. And that passed on a seven to zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. No, I have no announcements tonight, thank you.
Councilmember announcement, oh, it looks, it looks like staff does have an announcement.
My apologies.
Just one quick announcement, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is to invite the community to the Point Pinos Coastal Trail ribbon cutting this Friday, the 20th at 11:00 AM at the Estelmar and Ocean View Boulevard turnout. We've completed construction of the $2.8 million project, so we're very excited. And we'd like everyone to come out and celebrate with us. And we'll have speakers from our grant funders, as well as mayor and city staff. So we're very excited and look forward to seeing you all there.
Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, everyone for being here. It's, it's really exciting to see people in the chambers. Due current surge of COVID-19 cases, Pacific Grove Unified School District has reinstated their mask mandate as the cases have surpassed the school district policy threshold. Tate Monterey County has 81,552 cases, with education and childcare setting having the most cases at 23%. Retired or unemployed with 20% and agricultural with 12%. For case clusters by locations, school sites have the highest at 77% with 3,714 cases linked to clusters since the county has been identifying and recording clusters. We do have lots of tools in place. And thank you to these young adults wearing masks this evening. I appreciate that. And I know as we get through the pandemic, it must be frustrating. I have children at home who now are having to wear face masks again at school. So just know that I see you and I appreciate your efforts and thank you so much. You can go online and order eight more free COVID-19 tests. And that URL is special.usps.com backslash test kits. So you will get four boxes of two tests, homeless, delivered free to your door. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things in regards to the subcommittee. Councilmember Galletti and I were on in regards to the Coastal Commission. We're, I talked to Mr. Harvey and we're presently on hold until we decide if someone should be hired or not. The other item I want to talk about was last Saturday. We had the Walk of Remembrance and myself and Councilmember Tomlinson and Councilmember Chaps Pedori, it was an outstanding event. Want to thank everybody that participated and are listening right now. I, I do have some pictures, but Councilmember Pedori did an outstanding job on the resolution, and I think he's something to say before we show the pictures.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, this was the first time I've actually seen the community get together in action. I mean, I've seen it times two, but this time I was a prominent guest. So the community and the staff in action, and I would like to commend everybody, especially staff. The PG Police Department stepped up. They actually blockaded a street so that we, we were expecting a lower turnout and it was actually quite a high turnout. So they actually brought the place, so it helped move the traffic along. I would also like to thank the PG Museum of Natural History, Mamis Car and her team for organizing the entire event. So it really went flawlessly. I would like to really appreciate the staff time that has been put in here. As well as the event organizers, they, we had a representation right at the state level to county, to city, to neighboring cities. So it was really a, a very moving and really fantastic experience. So thank you.
Agree. And I know, thank you, Sandra, for putting up the photos.
I have one announcement, and it concerns texting during council meetings. I just want to call everyone's attention to our council policy, triple O seventeen, order of agenda for council meetings. So just to remind everybody, council meetings, each agenda item has three parts normally. And the first part is for city staff and management to make a presentation and provide their thoughts to council. The second part is public comment for each agenda item. And that's the time for public comment to come and speak to council in public. And then the third part is council discussion. And so I would ask you, my colleagues, to please refrain from texting as well as the public and city management during council meetings. All the discussions should take place in private, so every, in public, so everybody can, can hear. And if there is a need for taking a text or a phone call in private, then I would just ask that the member of council respectfully leaves the meeting briefly and, and takes care of their business. So thank you for keeping that council protocol in mind in the future. And now we come to general public comment. And anyone here wishing to speak to council, it's three minutes. Please come up to the front. We have this podium and a microphone on the right. Let's see, we have some brave public speakers here today. Welcome.
Good evening. I am here with my fellow youth ambassadors.
If, if you could speak to the microphone, yeah. And, and don't be afraid to speak loudly, okay? So we can all hear you.
My name is Caitlin Boats, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School. One of the goals for the youth ambassadors is to provide service to the community through, through goodwill to civic organizations. To demonstrate this, the Pacific Grove Youth Ambassadors will each choose a organization of their interest to champion in. They will represent this organization, demonstrate the organization's causes, and host events. For example, my champion will be the Pacific Grove Museum of Natural History. This is a way that we can show all the good organizations in our community and just demonstrate that and let the public know that they are there for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, hi, I'm Emily Keller. I'm a current 10th grader at Pacific Grove High School. In addition to service, leadership is another goal of the Youth Ambassadors Program. The leadership goal reflects our intention to help every member who passes through and participates in the Youth Ambassadors Program to develop confidence in public speaking, to focus on team building within the Youth Ambassadors as well, and to emphasize the importance of healthy and constructive relationships, to guide and encourage the youth of the community as they work to achieve personal goals, and ultimately to aid our youth in obtaining the necessary skills to serve this community in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Haley Atkinson, and I'm also a 10th grader at Pacific Grove High School. And another one of the main goals of the Youth Ambassadors is to positively influence the community and establish a general safe and connected environment for the people as a whole. Our organization plans on hosting summer events such as the Summer Lights Pet Parade, Dance Night, and Beach Day in order to bring children, adults, and any and all residents of Pacific Grove together. We also plan on serving the other organizations, like previously mentioned by another youth ambassador, such as the P Pacific Grove Weight Program, the library, the Butterfly Sanctuary, the museum, and many more. Ultimately, we focus on preserving the history, stability, and prosperity of Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Claire Cossum, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Thank you.
My name is Olivia Engelhorn, and I'm a ninth grader at Grove High School.
Hello, my name is Vivian Ming, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hello, I'm Roman Arroyo, and I am a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hello, I'm Daisy Dishney, and I'm in 10th grade at Pacific Grove High School.
Hello, my name is Juliette Susan, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hi, my name is Evans, and I'm a freshman at Pacific Grove High School.
My name is Athena Wade, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hello, my name is Zoe Cronin, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hi, my name is Eve, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
Hi, my name is Sasha Roberts, and I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School.
And thank you all very much for coming. Anyone else, sir?
I'm Mark Stevens, I'm a ninth grader at Pacific Grove High School. Mayor Peak, is it, is it okay to talk about the ATC project? Or has that been taken off the agenda this evening?
It was, it was taken off the agenda, but you can speak to it right now.
I would like to, please. I have a brief statement. First, thank you for this opportunity to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mark Stevens. I'm the owner of Mark Stevens Fine Piano here in Pacific Grove, small businessman. And my shop is on Fountain Avenue. I don't know of a single small business owner opposed to the ATC project, and a majority of the citizenry is approving of it as well. You, the city council, you've already approved the ATC project by a vote of six to one. And yet I thought we were here this evening for further discussion, so I, if not, I stand corrected. But we have, we're here for this future further rhetoric. And we have naysayers and yaysayers, and I'm a yaysayer. I'm fully supportive of this project. But I'm wondering, does this, these discussions will ever end? We're always going to have dissenters, further, further opposition, and this, these talks go on interminably. So I say enough is enough. And as a local businessman, resident, and registered voter of Pacific Grove, I'm calling upon you, members of the City Grove Pacific Council, to stand by your decision. Do not entertain new matters of dissent. You've already voted your approval. And for myself, I don't think I should be here this evening having to have this, express this to you. I ask that you stand tall, demonstrate strong leadership, and not cave to further opposition. We appease everyone, and we cannot be all things to all people. Now, please, I ask that we end this soon, this further discussion. Give ATC the green light and let's move onward and upward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening wishing to speak? And, and if there's anything, anyone else besides this gentleman, please come on up. We have some empty chairs in front.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Distinguished members of the city council and our community. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is John Hasselbauer. I'm a resident here, and I'm also a skateboarder. As many of you know, skateboarding is now an Olympic sport. And my boys and I skateboard several days a week. However, we have nowhere to do it safely here in Pacific Grove. We end up traveling either Monterey, Santa Cruz, Fremont, over an hour away just to get a good skate park. So we have an amazing community here. We have a lot of youth that would use a skate park. I've been to over 50 skate parks in the state of California, and every single one has better dignity. They're welcoming to all sports, all different types of people. And I appreciate your support as we try to move forward and get a skate park built here because this is a great community and it deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Candell, do we have anyone from the virtual audience wishing to speak?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have about eight speakers. Tamara Oliver.
Welcome.
Thank you, can you hear me? Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sounds like I can hear myself. So California has once again taken leadership in the fight to reduce the case of climate change and its impact on the plants and animals around us, well as us. You can place boots, scraps, everything except raw meat in your yard waste container. Place boots, everything except raw meat in your yard waste. They haul to the landfill and made available for you. And agriculture according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, food waste is the single largest category of agriculture. Food waste is the single largest category of food waste in landfill. Am I echoing? Methane, I, am I echoing?
No, you're fine. If you could speak louder, please.
Okay, I will. Worried in this methane, a powerful gas. Worried in this methane, a powerful gas. Contributes to global warming. Food waste contributes to as high global warming as operating. According to EPA, annual methane from landfills is roughly equivalent to operating. Annual methane from landfills is roughly equivalent to operating per year. 21 million. Curbside composting will be mandatory in California in 2024. Composting will be mandatory in California in 2024. There is information on local landfill websites about how to become and early foster. Fight climate change and help our agricultural industry thrive. Share this information with others. Please check it out. Join me to become a champion with others. Hosting, join me to become a champion. Hosting, thank you. Fight climate change and save our soil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Deimer.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The, hello, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The public has total echo. The public has total echo. Audio is not length and sync. I'm hearing my own echo too right now. I'm hearing my own echo too right now. We're getting the same echo as, we're getting the same echo. I have no other devices on, and it. No other devices on, and it. Mr. Deimer, we've been having some issues with our AV system this evening. There is a delay. I wanted to go on. We are checking with IT. I wanted to go on. I wanted to go on.
Ms. Damer, if you could go ahead, we're hearing you perfectly here.
Okay, the public is a mess up here because it's not safe. Okay, the public is a mess up here because it's not safe. We simply cannot run this city with last minute, we simply cannot run this city with last minute major amendments to agenda reports that are major amendments first gender that are act according to the Brown published for the public according to the Brown this behavior. We are lost as a council we are lost as a council governing city. And we have been skirting into the Twilight Zone. And we have been skirting into the Twilight Zone. And if we could please get this synced, it would be so. If we could please get this synced, it would be so. We are hearing the 25 second because we are hearing the 25 second
Thank, thank you. Ms. Damer, are you finished?
Just so the council knows, obviously, we have had some issues with the AV system this evening, and it sounds like affecting Zoom, and I'm communicating with IT and AMP on this, so we'll try and fix this as best as we can. Would you like me to proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Debbie Beck.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to just commend the Youth Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to just commend the Youth Ambassadors for getting 9th graders, 10th graders, I'm very impressed. I have 9th grade, 10th graders, I'm very impressed. I have mentioned this is a perfect example. Requiring some city council, I hope you could do that for that. Blessing from the people, I hope you could do that for that because appear to be as well. Thank you so much. Yes, we are giving back as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Janie Barron.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm very disappointed that you tabled the agreement for Sloane Avenue. Disappointed that you tabled the admit for Sloane Avenue. I am in complete support of finishing I am completing the Sloane Avenue finishing that city council pleading the Sloane Avenue approval that city council made months ago. Please don't let the naysayers bully the majority of our community who support the ATC project. Majority of our community who support the ATC project and you need to rebuild. You need to move forward the agreement that supports your previous forward the agreement new approval. That supports your previous Sloane Avenue approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmela De Garcia.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of staff, particularly Councilmember Podory, staff, particularly Councilmember Podory. We are attending the remembrance and or attending the council member remembrance and resolution Councilmember Podory for reading resolution apology to the group, also to city manager apology to the group. Also to city manager Harvey. Thank you very much. For participating in a very, very special event. City staff and the staff at the Pacific Grove Museum of Natural History. At the Pacific Grove Museum of Natural History. And very supportive, very helpful this event in happened without this event happened without appreciating all that they did. There were over 200 people that they did. And there were over 200 people that the city can be very proud of. It's something there are city can be very proud of. On Facebook also, there will be videos available. Also, there will be videos available. And I will you're doing, you know, when they are. Congratulations to Public Works for their special congratulations to Public Works for always felt that they are the heart of the city, the heart of our always felt that they are the heart of the city, the heart of our community. We are in the midst of fawning season, and I'd like we are in the midst of fawning season. And I'd like to thank Public Works and the Pacific Grove Police Department for the Facebook posts they have done for the Facebook posts showing the fact about the baby fawns and what to do and who to contact to baby and also for what to do and who to contact KSBW. And also for living in a beautiful KSBW that offers us a wonderful variety that offers us. And so I'd like to take this opportunity and so I'd like to take this opportunity and drive slowly, everybody respect it and just be very drive slowly for our dear and especially the fawns both for our dear and especially the fawns. I thank you, City Council, for your continued support and work that you do on behalf of our community. Support. Thank you. Work that you do on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex White.
Welcome.
So my name so my name and I would like to ask you could consider building near you could consider building a skate park near and I would think cool thing like and I would think a thing like go there to
Old John, what's your name?
Go there to
Old John, what's your name?
Well, all right.
Tell them your age and where you go to school.
All right. Okay.
Tell them your age and where you go to school. Where do you go?
I go to school at Robert that's all.
Where do you go?
I go to school at Robert. That's all.
Let me say thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council members, that was my son, Henry Beavis. He's 10 years old. Hey, council members, that was my son, Henry Beavis. He's 10 years old. Elementary school. Both of us both of us here in Pacific Grove. I'm a lifelong skateboarder. My son is as well. We just love I'm a lifelong skateboarder. My son is as well. And skateboarding is really great for places skateboarding is really great for just physical exercise, and we saw during and just physical exercise. And we saw during the COVID works for the COVID places like this outside for the kids to go to. We need places like this outside for the kids to go to. And Mike, thank you very much for listening to our comments, and I'll pass the mic.
Thank you.
Jane Haynes.
Welcome.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank the council for voting not to hear item 11. I want to thank the council for voting not to hear item 11, 11D, Vacation of Sloane Tonight. 11D, Vacation of Sloane Tonight. To me, your vote shows respect for applicable law. Me, your vote shows respect for applicable law, including the Brown Act, Coastal Act, and Government Code. Including the Brown Act, Coastal Act, and Government Code. I intend to participate. I intend to participate when this item returns in a manner consistent with applicable when this item returns in a manner consistent with applicable law. Thank you to those who voted not to hear this matter tonight. Thank you to those who voted not to hear this matter tonight.
Thank you. Welcome.
Randy Sabata.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and council members. I'd like to take this evening, Mayor Peak and council members. I'd like to take this we had an estimated participated in a walk and we had an estimated 600 people participating in two presentations and another 260 people two presentations I especially want to thank and acknowledge Councilmember Podory for reading I especially to thank and acknowledge Councilmember Councilmember Podory for reading and Tomlinson for showing their support by standing with Councilmember Podory for showing their support by standing with I also want to thank and acknowledge City Manager Ben Harvey. I also want to thank and acknowledge Chairperson City Manager Ben Harvey in attendance. Ei test especially the dedicated members of the attendance Police Department especially dedicated members of the Police Department. This was a very special and historic event. Throughout the day, I received very proud and historical comments from the descendants of the village. I received very proud that they would see comments from the descendants of the village. Descendants came from as far away as Southern California. Descendants came from as far away as Pasadena, California. Northern California and the Delta. Pasadena, Robles. Many were moved to tears as the resolution was being many were moved to tears thank you very much resolution was being read. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. Oh, oh. I want to second what Jane Haynes said. I want to second what Jane Haynes said. I'm trying to imitate her approach to this. I'm trying to imitate her approach to this echo, which makes it impossible for us to understand. Makes it impossible for us to understand free-flowing speech. Free-flowing speech. So I, I just want to second what she said. So I, I just want to second what she had about appreciating your about appreciating your, the votes to support following legal process, to support following legal process. And I think there needs to be some kind of public education. There needs to be some kind of public education so more people understand that the so LCP understand that the LCP and the Coastal Act are law. And the Coastal Act are law and need to be followed. And need to be followed. I'll stop there. Thank you. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council, and do we have anyone from council wishing to pull a consent agenda item? We've closed public comment. Oh, someone in person. Well, of course, don't be shy.
Hasselbauer, I go to Robert Down Elementary, and I was just gonna say that I agree with Alex White because skate parks bring a lot of courage to people, and they also bring they'll bring good feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, anyone from, oh, more. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come up. Sit chairs in front.
A little taller than he is, I think.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Emily Woods. I am a current Pacific Grove resident. For background, I am a military spouse. I am a mom to three daughters, eight, nine, seven, and two. It's crazy. I have a bachelor's degree in sport and recreation management, and I've worked for multiple recreation departments in my past. I am also here to support the proposed skate park project swirling around Pacific Grove. I think that not only would it greatly benefit the kids of Pacific Grove, but the whole entire community. We previously lived in Carlsbad, California. My nine-year-old was a budding skateboarder. She was very interested. My seven-year-old daughter with special needs was able to work on her occupational and physical therapy goals on a scooter safely at a skate park, and it was really fun to introduce my little one to wheel sports. That is not something I feel comfortable allowing them to do in the street in my neighborhood here in Pacific Grove. And I think a skate park deserves your attention and funding. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any council member wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Councilmember Tomlinson.
Sorry, I'm off topic a lot tonight. I don't have a count that, but I'm wondering if we need to take a tech break since the public can't hear us and didn't hear them very well. Would a reboot help, Sandra?
I can't answer that question, but I, IIT can, and I've been communicating with him via text. I'm not sure where we stand.
Let's just continue. I'm assuming that they're working on, on the problem as we speak. Our city manager nodding his head in agreement, and so if they need to, as you say, reboot, then we'll just do it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd like to just say that I, I support a reboot if it's needed, so that we don't go this way all night.
Okay. And do you have any consent agenda item you wish you'd pull?
No.
All right. Mayor Protem McAdams? No? All right, I'm not seeing anyone wishing to pull a consent agenda item from council, from the public? Okay, well, thank you for that. I'm not seeing it on my copy.
Been amended.
On, on the amended agenda. Okay, thank you. Anyone, again, from the publishing to pull a consent agenda item?
I see no hands raised online.
Any hands?
No, sir.
A move for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will describe briefly what we just did. We approved council minutes from May 11th. We've held a public hearing and approved a resolution for the appropriations limit for the next fiscal year, better known as the GAN limit. We have approved a resolution designating the task, DEI Task Force, as a permanent body and extended the term limits for the members. We've approved a resolution authorizing a parks bond application to the state. And we've received several reports, a check register report, core revenue, and from finance, thank you, Ms. Hannah, we've received MST board minutes from Councilmember Emilio, ratification, new local emergency actions by Mr. Harvey, of which there were none. We've received board minutes from the Beautification and Natural Resources Commission from March, diversity, equity, and inclusion, April 25th, Economic Development Commission from February and March, and the Library Board from January 10th. And that concludes our consent agenda item, items. And so now, Ms. Freddie, welcome. Hospitality Improvement District Program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. This public hearing, Hospitality Improvement District Program, is for the fiscal year 2022-23. It's being held to announce that there has been no majority written protest to the proposed annual district assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. And there is no changes in the Hospitality Improvement District boundaries. Through the adoption of the resolution tonight, it's recommended that city council approve the Chamber of Commerce annual report, levy the annual assessment, approve the program for fiscal year 22-23, which includes an annual expense budget of $259,000. Appoint the Hospitality Improvement District Advisory Board. Authorize city manager to execute an agreement with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce to administer the Hospitality Improvement District budget. All documents mentioned are published in the city council agenda packet. As stated in Resolution Number 07.044, all specific points of compliance have been met, and this includes my report.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to give public comment? Please come forward, anyone else.
I don't know. Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jenny McBride. I'm the President CEO of the Pacific Grove Chamber. I'm gonna back off a little. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Freddie for helping me through this process. It's my first time that I've done it, and she was really amazing to work with, and I just wanted to give her thanks for her help. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone virtual wishing to provide comments?
There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, discussion to council. Council member Padori.
Yeah, I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? I'm gonna make one, one comment. And, um, earlier this week, uh, our city manager and, and finance director, Ms. Hannah, Mr. Harvey and I attended a meeting along with, uh, Ms. McMurdo. And, um, very impressed, uh, and hopefully we're gonna see a strategic plan, uh, from MCCVB, which is of course our hospitality industry. So, um, expecting good things to come from, from these funds. Uh, Mayor Proton McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to commend Ms. McMurdo, uh, on your job. So far, you just came in, hit the ground running. You've been attending every council meeting, very impressed. People email me great emails that are supposed to come to you all the time. Because of my name, I'm sure you get them as well. Um, I just had one question, actually, the mayor, um, sort of brought this up. So the 97,600 in marketing and advertising, and then the 10,000 in the signage. So that, is that in it into what we pay to MCCVB? That's, that's, uh, above and beyond what we pay to them?
So this is an assessment made specifically from the hospitality district. So they are self-assessing themselves, um, so separate. But we are hoping to work with the MCCVB to leverage the funds that we have with the, they also, um, are given. So it's more of a leveraging, um, process.
Does that make sense? Excellent, yeah, no, excellent. And, and I know, um, you're in good hands with, with Jennifer Coker there. Um, I just, for me, um, I think that this is a exceptional implement, especially with coming out of the pandemic. Um, we have lost a lot of business with regards to conferences and conventions. And that hits us, um, especially at the Silomar Conference Grounds, which used to be our top, you know, tax TOT generator. So, um, so I definitely am in support of this and I wanted to thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. And on to the next agenda item again, Ms. Freddie, welcome.
Thank you. This public hearing is being held for the Downtown Business Improvement District Program for fiscal year 22, 23, to announce there has been no majority written protest to the proposed annual district assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. And no boundaries of the Business Improvement District are recommended at this time. The adoption of this resolution tonight is recommended that city council approve the Chamber of Commerce annual report. Levy the annual assessment, approve the program for the fiscal year 22, 23, which includes an annual expense, budget expense for $29,000. Up to Business Improvement District Advisory Board and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce to administer the Business Improvement District budget. All the documents mentioned are published in this city council meeting packet. As stated in Resolution Number 07 dash 042, all specific points of compliance have been met. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jenny, again, I just wanted to say once again, thank you to Ms. Freddie for her help. Both of these kind of work in tandem in my office as the administrator of the funds. We do have advisory boards that tell us, you know, how they want the funds to be spent. And then the chamber administers that for them. So thank you again.
Do we have any virtual public comment?
No, sir. No hands are raised for virtual comment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Council member Padori?
I have a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. Um, there, there is a vacant seat on the advisory board. Uh, is there any intent to fill the seat? I saw there were six remaining, it kind of like contentious on how decisions are made.
So, um, we are in talks with a couple of downtown merchants, uh, to fill that spot. So hopefully we will have somebody at our meeting in June because we want to seat them by the first meeting in July. So that is hopefully happening in a couple of weeks.
Well, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, oh. Moving on to item 11C. Caledonia Dog Park Exception at Special Events. Ms. Kell, could you put up those slides, please? Right there, I just said then, so next slide, please. So the recommendation is to hold a first reading and adopt an ordinance amending chapter 14.08.030 of the B code. And dogs are prohibited in parks, all our parks, except for, next slide, please. These four places, George Washington Park, um, by the ball field, the Coastal Trail, Rip Van Winkle in Lover's Point Park. Uh, this on leash, dogs are allowed on leash, uh, next. These are the exceptions again. In Berwick Park. And the Union, uh, Southern Pacific, or now it's Union Pacific Railroad, uh, right of. So in those six places, you can bring your dog to, uh, Pacific Grove Park on a leash. And what I'm proposing is that number seven, in Caledonia Park, only bring special events as authorized on the dates and times authorized by the city council. So it's a, it's an exception. It's a very small exception in time and space. Okay? And I believe that's, that's it. Is there another slide? I think that's the end. All right, now go off public comment.
I do have one virtual.
Yeah.
Can you have the floor?
Welcome.
Hi, I'm gonna try this. I'm not sure if I'll be echoing or not. I'm gonna try this. I'm not sure if I'll be echoing or not. I am echoing on my side, so I'll do this slowly. I am echoing on my side, so I'll do this slowly. On your list of parks, you have Berwick Park. On your list of parks, you have Berwick Park. But I have seen two signs in that park saying no dogs. I have seen two signs in that park saying no dogs. So I'm not sure if you're just talking about for events or if that's. If you're just talking about full vents or if that's for all time. Because then those signs need to be removed for all time. Because then those signs need to be removed. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I think this is a great addition. I just wanna, um, because the language is up there kind of quickly, um, ensure that the intent of the language, and it may be written perfectly as, is that it would just be during special events that we authorize at Caledonia. In other words, not every event at Caledonia. You know what I mean?
Yes, I believe so. Uh, Mr. Laredo, he helped, uh, wordsmith this.
My understanding of the words is that is exactly with the way the words should be interpreted, that it's at the specific times and dates allowed pursuant to a special event authorization. So the authorization should call out whether or not dogs are, uh, allowed or not allowed.
Okay. And then I have a, um, just an, a bigger picture question as to why we can't have parks at Cal, or dogs at Caledonia? Pets? Is it pets or dogs? Why, why we can't have dogs at Caledonia on leash all the time? Why does it only need to be during special events that we deem dog for? Do you know, city manager? Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Tomlinson, uh, through the mayor, um, parks are public spaces. And even animals on leash, and this is coming from somebody who owns a dog, who loves dogs. That's not true with, with the entire public. We have many people, and I, and I hear from them frequently, that are fearful of dogs or feel uncomfortable when dogs are around, even on leash, or, you know, had a traumatic incident in their, in their lives. So in small public spaces like Caledonia Park and others, we have to be mindful of that.
Okay, I just wanted to hear that. So, okay, I, if the wording is, uh, in agreeance with the intent, then I think it's great.
Mayor Proton McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for bringing this forward. Um, at the recent good old days, there were pony rides in Jewel Park. And during the annual Snow in the Park event, there's a petting zoo. And so I searched our city code looking for other animals and nothing came up. Um, so I think what I'm, you know, we talk about big picture. And since we are, you know, perhaps adopting this ordinance, do we want to also include non-domestic animals? So, um, because what I'm hearing is we're providing an exception, right? And so do we also want to include petting zoos and, and ponies?
Let me speak to that and perhaps Mr. Harvey as well. So this, um, this part of the code, uh, was it 14, 08, 03, oh, is specific to dogs. So we do not have a specific ordinance. Say you have a pet giraffe. We don't have an ordinance that prohibits from bringing that, I can think of. Maybe there is some other grand, but nothing specific. Only it's, this is only directed at dogs, this, this chapter.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And so when we're, when we're having other animals in the parks, uh, what I understood from the city attorney when I asked him this question is that that is based off of a sort of special event exception during the time of that, uh, application. Is that correct?
The concept is discretionary enforcement. Uh, so just like there's not an ordinance that allows good old days to be on lighthouse, when that permit is allowed, then, uh, the parking ti, times are not enforced. So that's another example. So as part of the special permit, then you could have a law, but you don't need one.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio?
Yeah, uh, you know, being a dog owner, my dog gone to another life and, uh, having four cats and they're gone. But, uh, I have a little bit of concern about Caledonia Park. Uh, it's a small s, area and, um, we don't know the breed that'll show up. Someone has, I'm not picking on pit bulls. But if someone has some animals that may be adverse to other animals, I, I think that should be, that that park should have leash also. I truly believe that.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
I, I'll just, in our response to that, I believe the intent is during an event and they would be on leash.
They would be on leash during a special event. Okay, that's the main thing.
I'd happily make a motion if you're ready.
Please.
Okay. I move to, uh, that's, I'm getting ahead of myself, to, um, hold a first reading and adopt an ordinance amending the chapter 14, 08, 03, oh, the Pacific Grove Municipal Code titled Dog Prohibited in Public Parks Exception with, which would allow dogs in Caledonia Park with a special events authorization by city council and direct publication of the ordinance will be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney.
I'll second. Oh.
Everybody.
Uh, let's create, uh, council member Smith, I heard him first by a millisecond. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven, zero. All right, uh, moving on to item 12A, uh, pet parade special event. Uh, Ms. Kendell, could you help me out with, uh, slides?
Just a reminder, uh, Kerry's handling the slides.
Okay. Ms. Lynnstrom, thank you. All right, next. So the recommendation is to approve a pet parade that's scheduled, uh, tentatively for July 29th this year at Caledonia Park. We've just approved dogs in Caledonia Park and waive fees, uh, for city staff support and park use. Next, please. So the description of this special event, uh, children and pets are carried, walk, bike, or hauled in a wagon. It starts at Caledonia Park. If you've never attended one of these, it starts at the, um, Stillwell Basketball Court. And the route is, it goes, um, up central between the, uh, Masonic Lodge and the, uh, post office to the intersection of Congress and Lighthouse. And then where it turns, uh, left or easterly for a few blocks. And then, uh, turns around, comes back to the park and it's, it's over with. It's, the event lasts, um, about an hour. It's, uh, free, uh, and, uh, very fa, family friendly. Anybody can participate. Next. And the sponsor of this event is the Youth Ambassadors of Pacific Grove. And city staff and police are required for street, uh, closures on lighthouse. And, uh, we'll turn to our city staff for estimates of cost. I did have an upper limit cost, but we'll wait to hear from staff. And then volunteers assist with, uh, organizing, including the, uh, most important role, the pooper scooper that comes and picks up afterwards. And I have a volunteer for that already. Next. And so, uh, at the end of last month, April 28th, the Recreation Board heard this event and they provided, uh, conditional approval. The conditions are in this agenda report. And at that time, the city manager and staff recommended do not approve. And that concludes my presentation. So I, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harvey or Mr. Go. Do you have any comments, costs?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the city council. The pet parade's a unique program as it's ran during normal business hours. So there's costs associated with it, sure, but staff is already here, present in Pacific Grove. So costs are minimized, I would say definitely less than a thousand dollars for us to administer it. The parade usually takes about a half an hour. What we're all, only losing really is probably just opportunity cost. We're downtown hosting this parade, helping do the parade. We're not at a park, maybe doing something else. But it's an hour worth of our time for, uh, great, um, community benefit. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chris Evans and I am currently a father of one of the ambassadors that you saw tonight. I wasn't here earlier, sorry about that. I was presenting a thousand dollar scholarship at the Pacific Grove Awards Night. So, um, as a 30-year resident and walking in the parade as my daughters grew up, it's just something you can't miss. It is a true hometown community event. It has been really disheartening to hear members, people from out of our community talk about the Youth Ambassadors in a negative way and how this group spawned. And I'm just here. And I'm just here to put on record that the members who started the youth ambassadors were people that were associated with the Feast of Lanterns only after they knew that the story was going to be changed. And and that anything that had to do with the former Feast of Lanterns was gone. There is a four person board on the on the Pacific Grove Youth Ambassadors and we've all been associated with it for less than two years and all of us had kids that were are were members of the Feast of Lanterns Royal Court at one time. On Saturday, I'm going to Sonoma to watch my daughter graduate from Sonoma State University. And she doesn't credit Ms. any of her classes at Pacific Grove for getting her there. She credits the ability to public speak that she learned as Queen Topaz. You can learn anything in school, but getting in front of people like I'm shaking like a leaf right now is hard. But yet, just like you saw the youth ambassadors today, this is what they do. So I just encourage the city to let this be an event that kicks off this program. It's a great group of kids. They're really excited about what they're doing. And we need to put the past in the past and move forward and just rebuild what we wanted, what we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on virtual audience? Oh, okay. Please.
Mayor, City Council, I really hadn't planned on saying anything more. But when I heard this about the pet parade, I've only lived here seven years. I I'm from Chicago. I lived fifty years there. I moved to San Francisco and I came here. And when I first came to this community, I was a tourist. I used to stay in the lighthouse inn. And this town just hit me really hard is to its charm, the people that live here, how pleasant and nice everybody is. And since I've lived here, I've observed things like this pet parade, the Butterfly Festival, good old days. It it's part of our community character. It gives our and people know this about us and they come here for those things. And then they, when they're finished with good old days or the pet parade, they say, wow, what what have they got over here? And they spend more time here. So yeah, I think it's a wonderful thing, this pet parade. I I teach kids how to play piano, anything that helps kids move forward. Please, please approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of hands raised virtually. Debbie Beck.
Welcome.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I just want to lend my support to the youth ambassadors and to the pet parade, having been involved and been in the pet parade since their early sixties and my children and grandchildren have all been in the parade. It truly is a community event. And to Mr. Go for lending his support, a little disappointed in hearing the other staff not support it. But again, we are a community and that's the most important thing. And we're here for our youth. They are our future and whether it's walking their pet or speaking in front of you as a ninth grader, I support this. So please, please, please vote yes. Thank you.
Christine Gruber.
Hi, yes, I'm Christine Gruber and I am on the board for the youth ambassadors. And as you saw tonight, these kids are there to do something for the community. They're not there to stand and be dressed up like a princess. They're ready to get their hands dirty and show the community what they can do while inviting them to see what PG has. And the pet parade is something that PG has always had. And what better group to bring it back than these young kids who want to support their town? So I hope that you all approve this tonight. This is not just for the youth ambassadors. This is for all of Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Emily Garcia.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am. I I know at one point I had lent my support for the pet parade, provided that it was to be become part of the city's umbrella and to be organized and facilitated by city staff, specifically the Recreation Department. As it is before you tonight, I do not approve it. I just can't wrap my head around the fact that the new group are so determined to have events before the leadership program of the youth, and that's what I call it, is over. It just does not make sense. Aside from that, the DEI had presented recommendations that they supported, city council supported with regards to meeting with community members, the DEI and what have you, to talk about the issues that still remain as a result of the Feast of Lanterns. And I want to remind everyone that this past weekend was the good old days and there were projected twenty five thousand people in our lovely town. And it would be interesting to wait and see what the COVID results are as a result of that before moving forward. I don't support this as it's presented. They filed late after the date of approval for their events. I believe three other events were denied for the same reason because they applied late after the date. And I see no reason whatsoever that this group should be given preferential treatment because of for whatever reason. The city has a duty to follow its own policies and staff's recommendations. It's your responsibility. Staff from the very beginning have denied it for the various reasons, perfectly logical, they all make sense. They adhere to the city's policies and you simply must follow them. That's all there is to it. They can reapply for next year and do it the right way. You need to set an example for other people to follow. And again, allowing this event to go forward when other applicants were denied because they were filed late is wrong. So I encourage you not to support this unless it becomes a city event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kendal, do you have any idea why my microphone keeps turning off?
I think it's just part of IT, making sure everything is working. I am hearing that the echoing is going away. So that might be part of it.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
We do. We have about three more. Michael Ipsen.
Welcome.
May fourteenth was a day of triumph for Pacific Grove. Councilman Padori's reading of the apology to the Chinese was welcomed by Asians and non Asians alike who welcomed the acknowledgement of past mistakes and commitment to realizing genuine diversity and inclusion. This is a model for all of Monterey County and has fanned hope for a better future. But there is work to be done to ensure that those who inadvertently or otherwise hurt Chinese people to enable them to come to grasp the harm they have caused and to adopt principles and practices that prevent that from happening again. When a little boy knocks down a playmate, his mother will tell the boy to apologize to the person he hurt. That boy can realize that he was wrong and he can give a sincere apology, asking his playmate if he's hurt and help him get back on his feet. Or he can mutter an almost inaudible sorry and then run off to play elsewhere with no sense of contrition, not learning anything from his mistake. On February sixteenth, the city council rejected the application from the Feast of Lanterns Board, concluding that the feast did not meet standards of diversity and inclusion. Earlier this month, the city council issued an apology for the harm the Feast of Lanterns had caused. The Feast of Lanterns Board was informed in February, they must reach out to the people affected to engage in a dialogue to gain understanding and also to consult with the DEI Task Force. This was supposed to be a process of genuine discovery and healing. Have these requirements been fulfilled? Like the little, the mother of the little boy, we should not just simply accept the boy's statement. I did. The group that proposes to sponsor the annual parade is exactly the same group who ignored the complaints about their treatment of Chinese. They are still operating under the same corporate entity, the Feast of Lanterns. Have they genuinely complied with the directives to resolve their deficiencies in diversity and inclusion? If they have not and sponsor another event, what signal does this send to the public, to those who were wronged and to those who expect change to be real, not fanged? Diversity, Equity and Inclusion should be a DNA of all organizations that hold permitted events in Pacific Grove. And those who have not met DEI standards should be held accountable. Will the youth ambassadors make DEI one of their projects going forward? I don't believe that this parade should be held under the auspices of any any organization other than the city as mentioned by Carmelita Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Sabado.
Welcome.
Mr. Sabado, you'll need to unmute yourself. Dixie Lane.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Dixie Lane and I'm not sure, you haven't been calling my name, but you sent a thing to unmute me, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to speak now or not.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just wanted, I've been listening to everybody speak and I just wanted to put in my two cents, I guess, in about the youth ambassadors and what this group has done over the last three years to dismantle the Feast of Lanterns. It's a corporation. It's not easy to do. It's a big thing and and to and their nonprofit status and all the bookkeeping and all the legal work that goes with that and to change things over. I know this because I have been a founding member of a couple of nonprofits. I serve on more nonprofits than I'd like to admit. And so I I know what the complexities of that are. I think that what I'm hearing and they have, if you look at what is, I think it's on their website or is it on Facebook? I'm not sure. But they have quite a bit of information on the organization and where they're going and what they're doing. At any rate, I would just like to say that in terms of making exceptions for latecomers in getting on the schedule for special events, I would like to say this would not be the first time the council has done it. You graciously did that for me when I was first developing Butterfly Days and I was putting it together. And there's a lot of hoops to jump through and it takes a long time. And so you kind of want to do thing, you have to do things in concert. And I know that these young people are getting lovely, nice sized scholarships. And I think if they don't have some kind of way to earn them, that is going to be, you know, that that's going to take away from our youth. And I also think that, you know, we're always looking for volunteers to do things, you know, I am always looking for them. I know the city's always looking for them. And you've got four people that stepped up and have slugged through this whole change and have tried to work. And I will say that they probably haven't been vocal enough in coming to council and and writing editorials for the paper and explaining who they are and how they've changed and how things are. But it seems like you've got four people that haven't given up on a youth pro, a summer youth program. And I think you might want to consider that issue, make your decision tonight and and that you have made this exception before. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Randy Sabado.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry last time, but I want to voice my opposition to having the youth ambassadors as the sponsors of the pet parade. Because of the lateness of the submission of their application and the event organizers who are the previous organizers of the Feast of Lanterns did not complete prior recommendations of beginning discussions with the community stakeholders, the DEI Task Force. Furthermore, they were instructed to bring back or revise the event for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, not this current fiscal year. I want to say to the adults in the youth ambassador group that your purpose in creating this organization is to teach leadership and team building and is very admirable. But by your recent actions and inactions, what examples and lessons have you shown your young participants? You've shown a total disregard for following an established process and timelines for submitting a special event. By doing this, you put yourselves above everyone else and want special consideration. Is this the characteristics of a leader? You've paid lip service to reaching out to the community and in essence have said, we don't have the time nor the inclination to follow the recommendations of the Recreation Commission staff and the DEI Task Force. How is this showing leadership? A leader learns from his or her mistakes, accepts responsibility, solicits input and suggestions for improvement. Are these the lessons you want to impart to young impressionable minds? And is this the way you want to start a new program? I suggest that if you are truly interested in the healing process, withdraw your application and instead support having the city sponsor the parade. The community should not be used or penalized for your lack of sensitivity and common sense. To the city council, less than a week ago, I stood in your chambers and watched with pride and amazement as you passed an apology resolution. The ink on this resolution is barely dry and before you is a is a request to approve an application by a group, which instead of moving towards inclusion, equity and fairness, is doing the complete opposite. I support a pet parade, but it should not be sponsored by this group, which has shown it is incapable of learning from its past mistakes and has no intention to comply with staff and recreation recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Cohen.
Welcome.
Hi, Janet Cohen. This is a transition year and there may still be people who do not realize the Feast of Lanterns has been voluntarily abandoned. There are some pitfalls I only realized recently with the pet parade. In my mind, it seemed a happy event could come back this year to bring children joy again, especially because of the last two years from the pandemic. But actually, and in the park concert put on by the city and chamber, assist, you know, would be easier in this transition year and possibly the youth ambassador not sponsoring it, but they could work on it and get some experience that way. Here are the pet parade issues to please consider solving or mitigating as best as possible if it was passed. PGUSD just reestablished the mask mandate, so should the parade also require masks if COVID numbers are in question? If the pet parade is permitted at this meeting, then can it be used as a teaching moment to the young ambassadors about cultural appropriation? How should they and the adults around them handle it if children or pets are wearing their Feast of Lantern outfits and want to be in the parade because they do not know of the changes made this year? I know when I was a busy mom, young, you know, I didn't pay attention to a lot of things. So I I could have well missed it. Will the chamber assist in a PR campaign to let people know the pet parade is no longer part of the Feast of Lanterns and to please wear other costumes? It's pretty hard to have a dress code, but would stickers, badges or ribbons being handed out for participation as a good citizen be helpful if people were asked to take off their dog's costume? So you can see why an in park concert might be easier. By next year, everyone should realize the change, you know, and that the Feast of Lanterns did voluntarily abandon. Um by next year, everyone should realize the change, you know, and that the Feast of Lanterns did voluntarily abandon it. Also, next year, can all special events be required to have an additional condition approval of, of getting, to get a permit applied that involves some kind of professional training and discussion about their brand's efforts to be inclusive of all people that is organized and paid for by the city? I think there's been some confusion about what people should and shouldn't do, and by the city sponsoring something that applies to all special events, it would be helpful to clear up, you know, what is expected and how to go about it. It uh, National Coalition Building Institute would be one choice, but also if the DEI consultant was hired as recommended, it could be that person. Um it would, it would seem best in our ever-changing world to have this part of the process every year for special events permits, because even though we are not totally cut off from the world, we are much slower to change. And it would help us keep up in how we represent ourselves for public events that is welcoming and respectful for all. And I hope um that the youth of the city, you know, do get to be involved in a way that's meaningful and that they learn um respect for others and because, you know, they're innocent to this, so. And it's an opportunity for us all to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Gruber.
I, I think Christine Gruber already spoke.
Okay.
Do we have any new speakers?
We do. Mo Omar.
Welcome.
Well, good evening. My name is Mo Omar, and I just, I have a confession. I have marched in the parade, pet parade for the last thirty years. It used to be marching with my kids. Now I'm proudly marching with my grandkids. And I did that uh two years ago. Somebody needs to speak on behalf of the kids. Uh I haven't heard anybody come out and say, hey, I represent the youth, the kids, uh especially the, between the ages of two years old and six years old. And somebody needs to speak on behalf of the dogs. The dogs have feelings, and the dogs do enjoy the parade. If you're out there with the cats, the dogs, the turtles, they just love it, right? We need to do something for the dogs. I do have two dogs, Shasta and Nari. They've been in the parade. They want to be back in the parade, and I'm speaking on their behalf. We're really lucky in Pacific Grove to have animal-sprints rescue projects, and we are the headquarters for the peace-of-mind dog rescue. As a town where dog heaven, I'm positive that the event organizer will comply with Monterey County's health officers' conditions for having outdoor, and I repeat, outdoor events. Last but not the least, this is a phenomenal event for the business community. It does bring, I estimate, two thousand to three thousand people to our downtown, and those people do shop, eat, and stay. It puts Pacific Grove on the map. I want to thank you for your service, and to all the people who are associating this event with the Feast of Lanterns, it's, it's time to move on. It's time to go back to where we were and allow the youth, the dogs, and let's enjoy their event. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other speakers, Mr. Mayor. No other hands are raised.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring back to council, who would like to speak on it, Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um lots to consider uh over a pet parade, uh which I think is ultimately has really great intentions and, and the spirit of it all. So as the, I, I did uh attend the rec board meeting as the liaison to the rec board um back in April, and there was a lot of discussion, really good discussion from the public and by the rec board and considering what to do. Um I'll, I'll just go back and say that the submission from the organizers was for three separate things. So it was called Summer Lights, Summer Lights Dance, and the Pet Parade. They were, it was late. It is in, in an attempt to reinvent what was Feast of Lanterns in a much better way. Um I agree with the decision by the rec board to deny the, that as a grouping because it needed more time to go to the DEI task force and to be uh retooled in a way that is inclusive and proper and what our community deserves. Um so they did deny those three. They also kind of deliberated for a long time about whether the pet parade could be carved out and still happen, okay? And I'm going to say that even though I'm a stickler for rules, and I do think you should need to submit stuff on time and, and all that, I think that I'm, I, I support tonight um going ahead and it's uh having a waiver so that we can do the pet parade. Now, as far as who puts it on, the city, or whether the um the youth ambassadors and those adults, we heard from one tonight, thank you for being here. Um I'm going to say, let's ha, that the youth ambassadors do it because youth aren't youth forever. And so we heard some of them are juniors. They'll be seniors next year. Do they do this during their senior year, or is it just junior year? Um and I think there's a lot of lessons happening that are all positive. Um and so I would like the youth to be involved in helping put forward uh the pet parade as a city-sponsored event um this year. And so that, that's kind of how I've, I've deliberated on, on all these decisions. It's, it's not an easy one. I understand um the, the, the organization who is putting this forward. I will please say that spend the next calendar year working with the city, working with DEI, working forward um together to bring the Summer Lights Dance and Summer Lights uh events inclusive of the pet parade for next year together in a way where the work is actually done and the youth learns from it. Um and, but as far as July twenty-ninth goes, I'm excited. I've never been in the pet parade, and I'm picking up on what Mr. Omar said. It's not just dogs. We might have iguanas and derbels and other things, which would be pretty cool. So, thank you for, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Ami, Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, must tell everybody that I support dogs. I support cats. I support parakeets, whatever it may be. We, we've had them all in our family. And I, I think this is an exciting event. However, um I think we need to set a pause on this for until twenty-two, twenty-three for the special events calendar. We're too fresh off the Feast of Lanterns right now in the uh apology uh that showed, as it was reported, two hundred and fifty, three hundred people there. Um I believe this should be placed on the twenty-two, twenty-three to put a pause on it so it could be done right. Um and I support the staff for uh denying this at this time, but I do recommend that it be placed on the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar year.
Mayor Portman McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and um I uh I'm going to echo Councilmember Emilio's uh statement and recommendation. I mean, for me, it's, it's a slap in the face. Um I understand the intention is kind, and I understand that this group is excited and they're revamped, and they're a new group. I appreciate that, but I also appreciate people and feelings, and you know, I do, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this to the council. Um I'm glad that we're having this conversation, and you know, I mean, if the will of the council is for the pet parade to move forward, and the pet parade is very innocent, you know, and, and I um I agree, like I love the, seeing the kids and seeing the pets dressed up, like it is a very innocent event, and the kids are, you know, the ones who are, will get the short end of the stick to say, you know, I mean, they will miss the event. We have missed the event for, for many years now. So for me, if the will of the council is to move forward, I would only be able to support um this if this is hosted and put on and sponsored by the city only. Um the history of the pet parade is it has been a city-sponsored event for, for decades and decades. It just so happened to be on the weekend of the Feast of Lanterns, so um I, I would be happy to um to support it in that capacity as a city event, and of course, anyone can volunteer, anyone can participate. I would love to see the youth ambassadors there. Um but I agree that we just need to pause for this year, um give time for everyone involved to, to, to work out, negotiate, talk, um heal a little bit, and then next year, I would love to see this, you know, Summer of Lights or what they come to the table with, but I just feel like we're putting lipstick on a pig, right? Like that is, for me, is, is what we're turning the pet parade into, and I, and I don't want to see this innocent event becoming politicized. We have enough of that in the world. You know, and um so I would love for the city to put on the pet parade this year, host it, sponsor it. Everyone's invited. It's an inclusive event. I would love to still have whoever signed up to volunteer to volunteer. And then just next year, we can talk about this group of events. So that is the way that I will be able to support it this evening, and I do thank you for bringing this to, to our council.
Councilmember Perdory.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh first, uh there's, there are a few things, and this is actually a tough choice, but before everything else, uh I was never expecting pooper, scooper, and an agenda item, so that's a, that's a first for me. Uh having said that, uh a, a few things, um I have kids. I have three kids, uh and pets are number one. I know I'm go, I'm going to get into that pretty soon. Uh so I have nothing against the event itself. Uh this really will bring the best of the city. Uh but when I think of events, I also think of uh events as, as something that needs to bring the community together. And what I'm hearing, what I've seen so far, is that not everybody is in. Why is that so? And I think we need to really understand that. So if, if this is an event that is not going to bring everybody together, then there is something that needs to happen. The events from the Feast of Lanterns, uh the disbanding of the Feast of Lanterns Board, uh the uh whatever is the new Feast of Lanterns Board, um the what I have uh perceived at least is that there is a rush towards making things happen. Just five days ago, I, I was apologizing on behalf of the city. Uh and here I am, hearing that the, the board or the ex-Fest of Lanterns Board is uh coming up with a proposal to have a pet parade. How is that an appropriate apology for the city? Uh I don't see that at one uh at all. So my, my view is that uh we need to honor the apology itself. We need to honor basically what the staff has done, what the recreation board has recommended. The recreation board has directly stated that we need to work with the community stakeholders. And really, this is an opportunity for all of us to collaborate, to open our minds, work together to make events happen. And I would encourage that on the sport of healing, on the sport of working together, that we all come together, the Feast of Lanterns Board comes together with the other groups, work in tandem with the city to bring such events onto the table. So I would not be supporting this. Thank you.
Count, Councilmember Clery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um I enthusiastically support this. Uh I met with the fifteen applicants who wanted to become uh the youth ambassadors, and I was beyond inspired. Uh they truly are the best of Pacific Grove, and uh contrary to some of the comments I've heard, uh this event will bring the community together and is exactly what we need uh to be, to bring forward and to support of, as council members. Uh there's been some comments about late submissions, kind of what I view as technical red herrings. Uh you know, just last year, this, this council's uh approved a motorcycle rally thirty days uh in front of the event. And then this year, we, we supported and approved the Legends of the Autobahn, which was a late submission as well. So when I hear technicalities trying to be used to leverage an argument, that just kind of raises a red flag for me. Truly, this is an opportunity for our youth to shine, and these are great kids. I mean, I just was blown away, uh and I was just so glad that I was given the opportunity to, to interview them. I went out of there uh on a real high. And I think it's unfortunate that we're kind of um tarring their best efforts and trying to engage with the community. They, they want to do this. They want to come out, and they want to engage with us. That's community healing. Um so I will, I will support this. I, I, I thank the youth ambassadors. By the way, some of the board members did walk in the uh march of remembrance. That, to me, shows real dedication to uh the healing process that's been described. So I don't think there's been any lack of forward progress on there, and quite the opposite. They have shown us that they're willing to abandon a past event that had universal, you know, support in the community for decades. They were willing to abandon it and move forward, so we've got to let them move forward, and we've got to let these kids shine. So I'll also just uh uh finish up my comments to say the rec board uh and to Councilmember Tomlinson's point, she's right. They denied two of the three and approved this one. So I'm willing to listen to their advice on this, and I, I will support this.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Uh I'm, I'm of the same uh kind of thinking as Councilmember Clety and Councilmember Tomlinson. Um this is a youth event, and I just want to keep the focus on the youth and helping our youth. They, they were here tonight. Um they, it was great to see them. It really brought a light into the room, and uh I think that it's true. It's, it could be an opportunity for healing, and um I think Councilmember Tomlinson made some really great points about the entire thing. Uh i- the rec board also has chimed in on it and denied two of the events, which I think is, is kind of in the spirit of trying to set the stage for healing, trying to, you know, not just reinvent the Feast of Lanterns right now in this timeline, so. Um I think i- in order to help the youth, they don't get a lot of time, like I think was being brought up by Councilmember Tomlinson. Junior years, when you apply to college, maybe they want to have, you know, a chance to put something, do some community service for their, for their resume or for their college applications. Maybe they, if you do it senior year, it's too late, that kind of thing. So I also want to give them opportunities. Um and, and also, we've just got out of the pandemic, or I guess we're not quite out yet, you know, as we know, we're masking again at the schools, but um we, we, they've lost some opportunities over the last three years, and so this is one that we can actually control and, and have. So I think, you know, anything to help them right now, it would be great. It is a, it's a, it's a tough decision. It's a cost benefit. I understand all the considerations, but I'm coming down on the side of the kids on this one. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion, sorry. My cut, please.
Uh let me, Mayor, I'll put my glasses on first. I'll move that uh council approve a pet parade scheduled for July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two at Caledonia Park and waive fees for city staff, support, and park use.
All right, now, second, discussion on the motion.
I do have one question on the motion, and this goes back to the discussion or under the eleven-C draft ordinance. Could the maker of the motion clarify specifically whether dogs shall be allowed on leash during this event?
Uh thank, thank you, Mr. Laredo, for keeping us very honest.
Uh subsequent to approval of the ordinance, which will happen in advance of the event, that dogs shall be kept on a leash during the event.
And the second or the motion.
I will, I, I second that friendly amendment.
Mayor Portman McAdams.
Thank you. Um I'm just, I'm wondering if the maker of the motion would be willing to um have this for one year as a city-sponsored event.
No.
No, okay.
I'll just uh make one comment um before we vote, and that is for the concerns that were voiced today. I think we need to lay any groundwork that you'd like to lay. You need to start it now. Um because I don't think anything that I heard is going to be quickly addressed, and with, I, I don't want to repeat, I guess, of this discussion um when we have the special events calendar come before us in January, so a minor plea um to start thinking about um about that. Anyhow, um all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed?
No, uh in respect uh for the AAPI community and the recent apology to the Chinese from the City of Pacific Grove, we're voting no.
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 Okay, um but the record shows the motion passes four to three. Mayor Proten McAdams and Councilmembers Podory and Emilio dissenting. Right, and do you want to do one more item before uh usual? No, we're gonna take, we're gonna, maybe maybe not, I I don't, I don't know. Um so let's take a a ten-minute break, reconvening at eight oh five.
Hey, Mohammed, uh this is just a quick test. I'm talking out of the chamber mic right now.
I I don't hear any echo.
No echo currently?
No, no. Can you try speaking through your Zoom another?
Yeah, let me just uh let me just promote.
Hello, Mohammed, can you hear me? Yes, I do, I can hear you.
Okay, um I am currently receiving no echo. Let me just, let me just double confirm that this mic is open and these mics are staying open. I I can't hear my, no, yeah, I can't.
I hear a lot of background noise, but no echo.
Yeah, I just have my AirPod in, walking through that uh the chamber there. Uh I I currently do not hear an echo. Can you go ahead and just have a conversation with me real quick? I'm outside.
Yeah, I um I don't hear any echo. You're sounding good now.
Yeah, this is all you.
Yeah, the only thing I hear is uh sound right now. Because there's a mic open in the chamber, but because I wanted to make sure that those weren't picking it up. I think that might have fixed it.
Okay.
All right, I'll give it a test when everyone's in there speaking again, but uh.
Okay, this sounds good, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Yeah, what's the score? I, you know, the problems. Yeah, of course, yeah. I I told my wife, just tell me, I'm glad you're doing that, because I'm afraid to put it on my phone. Because, oh yeah, I just looked it up now.
Yeah, but here, uh Wiggins has nineteen, uh Thompson thirteen, Curry twenty-one, oh nineteen.
That's fantastic, they're killing them, good.
Yeah.
Uh and I think it's the second game at the home, at home.
Yeah, the second is two, two, one, one.
Two, two, yeah, because they wore yourself better, right? Good, thank you, I usually I'll say, don't tell me, because I gotta record it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, New York, so.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, awesome. Oh, it's getting busy, so.
How've you been?
Yeah, very busy, so.
Busy can be good.
I'm sorry.
We're going live with a new police record.
Oh, yeah. I thought the equity uh presentation was really interesting. But yeah, enjoyed that.
She did great, yeah.
Enjoyed.
Hi, how are you? Nice flying by, I can't believe it's eight already.
Yeah, I didn't realize, and then as they were nearing the end of that item, I was like, oh, they're probably gonna break. Yeah, I think. Yeah.
Would everyone please take a seat? And welcome, Mr. Harvey, who will give us an update on the American Rescue Plan Act survey and direction.
Uh thank you, actually, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna hand this over to the very capable Ms. Jocelyn Francis, who will be leading this discussion. She's also joined by Mr. Go and Ms. Howie. Ms. Francis, thank you.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, all right. Um Carrie, do you have the presentation available? Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, uh we're gonna discuss the American Rescue Plan Act Community Survey Results. Um next slide, Carrie. The week of April eleventh, we opened up the survey to the community. Uh we posted it online at cityofpg.org/arpa. Um we conducted a variety of public outreach, um including uh postcard mailers to addresses in Pacific Grove, um advertisements in a local paper, social media campaigns, and posting flyers in our public facilities. Uh the public library was generous enough to assist community members either with the online survey at the public computers or with paper copies of the survey. And the results were issued this week. Next slide, Carrie, um can you open that up for me, please? Perfect, so the results are, um the most current results are posted online um along with the average rating for each uh survey um opportunity. Um so as you can see, um the top three uh funding sources are related to street and intersection and sidewalk improvements, uh the recycled water plan and infrastructure improvements, increased funding for local parks and recreation programs. Um Carrie, actually, can you bring up the next slide? Yeah, I'm sorry. Um I'll just continue on with my presentation. So there were nearly eight hundred and fifty total respondents. Um and of those respondents, four hundred and seventy-seven submitted free text uh form responses. So four hundred and seventy-seven is a lot, um and we haven't had a chance to get through them all. And the response was for the question, in what other ways should the City of Pacific Grove use ARPA funding? Um so we talked to our consultant, Zen City, on how long it would take to do a further analysis of the survey results, particularly those free text fields, to give uh council a better indication of maybe any opportunities that we may have missed um in the formalized questions and results. Um so Zen City will have those results by May twenty-fifth um to give you a better summarization of those free text fields. So um on May twenty-fifth, we'll publish it to that same website that we have available, thecityofpacificgrove.org/arpa. Um and I can send an email to city council, giving you those updated um analysis and results. Um and then if uh the council likes, I can come back to city council and do another presentation. Um and then, and part of my uh council report this evening was um talking about utilizing the own program CIP funding, or ARPA funding rather, for CIP um or capital outlay projects that are unfunded or deferred. Um in addition, uh if council wishes to wait for those further uh analysis um on the May twenty, expected to be received on May twenty-fifth, um the ARPA funding can be used as a placeholder in next fiscal year's budget. And there can be further discussion on uh council's wishes and what to do with that funding. Um that concludes my presentation this evening.
Thank you, do we have public comment? Please come forward. Yes, absolutely. And anyone else wishing to speak to the side, and please come sit in the in the front pew. Thank you.
Do I have my timer here, or? Okay, uh my name is Andrew Andy Cubica. Um I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, Honorable Mayor, uh councilpersons and residents. Um uh I think the survey uh had the first three items were pretty good, was the public streets. I'm chairman of the traffic commission, I think that's a great idea. Recycle plant, I think that's a good idea, and um uh parks are great. But I I went back and I looked at the fifty-one items, and I broke it down into different, which items I thought would give the biggest bang for the buck on the um for the capital. for the capital improvements. And it was the fire station roof for $35,000, Chautauqua Hall for $27,000, the main roof on Chautauqua Hall north side for $54,000, City Hall repair for $80,000, and a fire station bathroom. The reason I said those is if you don't fix water roofs and you have more water damage, it costs, it costs you tremendous amount of money. And that comes to $246,000. Then there was, we tried to paint Chautauqua Hall three years ago in 2018, and it never got done. Well, part of Chautauqua Hall. So there's been a delay. The paint is peeling. We're going to have to do more prep work. And in the, in the plan for the 51 items, there was a Chautauqua Hall plan for 25K. And I think that needs to be done so we can move forward on Chautauqua Hall as this historical building. And it's important to the city. And then the purple pipes for non-potable water for parks. We're spending $400,000 a year for Cal-Am. And there is a drought. Water is precious. Water is scarce. Suggest we can apply for a grant similar to what the Parks and Rec, to what we're doing for, Direct Department was doing for for the baseball backstop. And I believe when I looked at that forum, we could do an irrigation from that. Maybe we get some money for that. And that's 120K. And then there were a couple of other items that were storm-related and street-related. And that was 18th Street and Storm Water Improvements and the 17-mile drive, Storm Water Improvements. Because if you don't fix water damage, it creates more damage. And with the cost of that, you're going to be paying double in a couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Emily Hasselbauer. You heard from my son Eli and my husband earlier about the skate park. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. In agreement with the ARPA survey results, I'd like to address the need for a large portion of ARPA funds to be earmarked for parks and recreation. There are many projects in Pacific Grove that need funding. But when I think of the COVID-19 pandemic, I think of the physical, mental, and social impacts and ripple effects that will be felt for years to come. This money should be used to improve our public park facilities and for capital improvement projects that increase use and engagement. Sorry, use and engage overall health and well-being among Pacific Grove residents. We relied heavily on these spaces to exercise and safely socialize during the pandemic and continue to do so. Cities around the country are investing large portions of money in parks and recreation, having followed national data and park trends, and recognize the positive impact public parks have on communities through physical fitness and its ability to improve mental health and social engagement. Research has shown that the impact of the pandemic on youth and mental health has been devastating. Many kids are struggling with depression, anxiety, and have feelings of loneliness and hopelessness. Outside of a basketball court, Pacific Grove parks offer no free outdoor recreational facilities geared toward our older youth above playground age that makes independent physical activity and skill building with social engagement. With an increase in funding to parks and recreation, the city can make much-needed improvements to existing park infrastructure and invest in the future wellness of Pacific Grove. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor, City Council. This, this just occurred to me. When I moved here seven years ago, I came here for a very specific reason. And that was to be the music guy in this community. I'm a professional jazz pianist. I played in nightclubs and stages and theaters for 40 years. I'm retired from that now. Currently, I teach piano to children. I have a teaching practice. I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but there's a brand-new conservatory that just opened. It's a, it's called the Pacific Grove Conservatory of Geometry and Music. I'm the music director for it. And we have temporary quarters at the Masonic Lodge across from the post office. But hearing we have these funds and seven years ago, when I met Moammar, and I went to my first bid meeting, I proposed that the city have an annual jazz festival, just a weekend thing. And I still think it'd be a great idea. We have Monterey Jazz Festival, which is world famous. And in California alone, I believe there's 41 separate jazz festivals. And I think this town would be a great place to host one. It could be done relatively inexpensively. And I'm the guy that could make that happen. I know all these jazz musicians who would welcome a chance to play somewhere. I know how to set it up. And I wondered if you, the city council, would entertain such a notion. I don't even know how to move forward with such a thing, but I wanted you to make, make you aware of it as a body, that I really see this could be becoming very special for our community. And we always need something new to not new, but something unique that, again, gives us our character and our identity. At the time I approached the bid committee, Tom McMahon was the chairman. And he looked at me, said, Mark, where's the money coming from? I went, I don't know. We have funds here. You're looking for something to do with it. And I think this might be a good thing to consider. And thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, hi, Mayor, councilpeople. Vince Tumanello, Pacific Grove resident for 46 years. I wasn't going to speak to this issue, but the lovely young lady spoke just a little bit ago, kind of inspired me, brought my memory back to times in my youth. And I want to share with you just briefly, all the wonderful achievements and improvement in my life, physical being, welfare, psychic abilities, and so forth, that were achieved through local community recreation activities that were organized, in many cases, by those other than school teams, like, you know, varsity football and things like that. So I know I heard the first gentleman speak to a lot of repairs. I normally would have assumed that would come under your your regular budget situation, you know, Chautauqua Hall needs a repair. I figured you would probably come up with the money from a regular general fund or building fund or whatever. So I want to encourage this money to be used partly for some of the concepts that that lovely young lady shared. And maybe she or her husband could help facilitate with you some of those dynamics. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone virtual that wishes to speak?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have four hands raised currently. Inga Diner?
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. It's so nice not to have the echo. I want to thank IT. That was just a horrible firsthand. On this, I'm going to kind of look at this as an exercise in futility, masquerading as public participation. I don't know how many times people could take that survey. I only took it once. But the questions were, oh goodness. Well, anyway. And when the item was brought before all the boards and commissions for submittals of CIPs, the whole amount was presented, not the revised amount that we heard from city manager at a recent council meeting that already earmarked more than half of it for raises salaries, et cetera, to making the city whole. Well, you know, what's left over is a pretty smaller amount. And so we've got, there's been just dreams floated around there. When actually, Andy Kubica kind of had it right. We don't want any more broke-all halls, you know, with demolition by neglect. Chautauqua Hall is too important to get to not fix. And the fact that the city hasn't spent the money to fix these things shows that we need the funds to fix them, because that's part of making our city whole. All these other things are absolutely wonderful, but the dreams are just up there in the sky. Let's all go float some balloons and pollute. I don't know. Anyway, thank you very much for getting the IT fixed.
Thank you.
Charlie Gibson?
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Like to speak quickly about the proposal for the deferred project list. Going down the list here, I have a couple of items here that I drew my attention. Number one, I have a question for, I guess, the council or staff, in that looking at all of the projects on the deferred list, do these all qualify for ARPA funding? I think that would be the, one of the key questions here. I know that there are some qualification requirements for ARPA funding. So I think that would just be a general question I would throw out there. Looking, looking at the list, though, there are two items here that I really want to draw your attention to. And those are two, two projects that are proposed. One is at Arnett Park, and one is at George Washington Park. Both are in regard to water runoff. And I think this last winter, we experienced significant runoff at both parks from the storm waters that washed all of decomposed granite out of the pathways and for several blocks away at Arnett Park, which caused kind of a problem in the neighborhood there, not to mention all of the decomposed granite going into the storm drains. But, but I think there's an issue at Arnett as well about the water runoff shedding off the, the back hill there. If you can, if you go over there and visit the park, you'll see there's quite a bit of evidence of erosion in that. And I would be worried over the course of time that that could have significant problems as it relates to the homes and the park in general. The ARPA funding would fund storm drain improvements, which I think would directly apply to both sites. And that would include drainage. You could put pathways in there for collection systems and to have it divert out into the storm system. So this is, this is something that's significant and deep and would require a lot of work, staff, but this, I think, would be direct line for funding. The other issue here is, is for the open space study. I think there's very value. And I believe one of the other rec board members is going to speak about that shortly. So I'll let him go ahead and talk about that. And, and that would be looking at combining several projects into the one open space study to consolidate things and make it more cohesive approach for addressing some of these issues that are on the list here. And my last one that I'm going to mention here tonight, I think without regard, very much like roof conditions and things like that, I really think the council needs to seriously look at the condition of Elmarie Dyke open space there. The park has just been left almost abandoned. And it's in, it's in, it's in going in ruins here. So you're going to need to fund something there shortly, or else you'll have to just replace most of the entire park. So sorry about that, that report, but thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Jay Tully?
Welcome.
Hello, this is Jay Tully. Appreciate the chance to speak. As Charlie mentioned, I'm also on the rec board. And I'd love to talk a little bit about the open space plan suggestion. So as the ARPA survey showed, that parks and recreation was the number three priority. So it's certainly up there in the citizen's view. I've been on the rec board for almost five years now. And we've seen a lot of good ideas come before us, but we've often struggled to get any type of physical improvements done. And I think that's really because we approach these projects individually. I think we need a comprehensive plan. We need to understand the opportunities and constraints. And we need a way to review all of the project proposals, better determine the feasibility in each of the, the site suitability, the availability, and to provide a mechanism for public inclusion in the process. I think that the park and open space plan would provide that opportunity, and it would start to put the pieces of the jigsaw puzzle together. So the rec board is definitely motivated to do our part, but I really feel our hands have been tied, because we don't have a, any type of plan. We've addressed individual projects and tried to look at them. And, you know, we've got a lot of good ideas that we even talked about tonight, the skate park. There's other ideas for bike pump tracks, improvements to George Washington Park. But we really don't want to have these projects conflict with each other. So this park and open space plan would be an excellent way to go about this. There are currently six projects that have some similarity in that they're, they're planning projects, or that they're, they're going to require some design. So there's number 35 on the deferred list, the park and open space plan. Number 33, the George Washington Park Master Plan Review and Design. Number 36, Caledonia Park Expansion. Number 38, the dog, sorry, the pump park. Number 39, the skate park. And number 42, the dog park. The, the five following the open space plan come to an estimated budget of $650,000. And that's because, or partly because they're all approached individually, which is going to require different designs and sequo. So we really think that going about it with the park and open space plan at the beginning is going to really help these other projects move along. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Pixie Lane?
Welcome.
Oh, there I am. Good evening. I was inspired by what some people had to say. I, and so I just have some thoughts that I had shared on the survey, but I wanted to share or give a little bit more information. I think that giving a lot of money to the parks and recreation, specifically for, so that we can alleviate some of the fees that we charge for the youth to be involved in activities and to go to them, because I think that in this, currently, that's an impediment for a lot. Also, so that we could create activities for additional activities that are for youth, adults, and seniors that of all kinds, that we're not implementing great fees for, that we can underwrite them with this money for the, for the immediate near future, that would bring people out of their homes and back out, and it would create community. And once they're out, you know, things do happen. I'd also like to see some of this money be granted to some of the nonprofits that are organizing all the events that we have in Pacific Grove, or some of the events, those that are Pacific Grove organizations. Because one of the things that they do is when we put on events, whether it was the old Feast of Lanterns, and now hopefully the youth ambassadors and Butterfly Days and whatever we do, we bring, we fill up the hotels, we bring in people downtown, we encourage and stimulation of the economy by, just by the virtue of our events. And one of the toughest things for us to do in these little nonprofits is we're constantly knocking on the same doors, and we are all raising our own money every year. And it's a tough go. It's a very tough road. And I just think that it would benefit the city if they maybe gave the Economic Development Committee a certain amount of money to distribute to some organizations. And I do hope that Elmarie Park gets a facelift, because every October, we use that for all of our children's activities during Butterfly Days. And just as an aside, maybe we could really, one way I think that it might be nice that we could give the, the town a little bit of a facelift is if we perhaps help the businesses with new signage and the buildings, you know, with a coat of paint. Some of them are looking kind of shabby. And I know it's very expensive to get permits for signage. I know what it cost us here at the gallery to, to get just the permit for the signage. Never mind what it costs us to get the signage done. So I just think that those kinds of things that would give us a little facelift might be nice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Beck?
Welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. I had spoken to this in the past regarding our, our rec program. I recently received a survey regarding park layouts from the Pacific Grove Rec Department. And I and I was very impressed with their transparency because they were requesting our email address. And I don't recall doing that on the survey that the city put out recently. I did respond, and only one time. However, I would like to mention, our community does not offer a Boys and Girls Club. We do not have a YMCA. We don't have any activities other than our rec department, and yet our residents and their families pay on average $180 a week during the summer to attend a camp. In order to live in our community, it takes one to two incomes to live here, and yet there are over 2,000 children, school age children that live here that need to be attended to during our summers as well. I was a child that had a wonderful park to play in at Caledonia Park, Monday through Friday. I've mentioned this in the past, back in the sixties and seventies, still a very good friend with, friends with the rec leader, Shirley Lowery. Amazing, she went on to become a school teacher. But those are just things that I think our city needs to look at and look deeply at, because I know there are council members that have children, whether they're school age or older. But, you know, having a program during the summer months would benefit our students, the families. They could go to work with peace of mind. But again, we don't offer what other communities, our surrounding communities offer. So I would love to see more input at the rec department for students, for children to be able to tend to parks with having rec leaders there. I think it's a great program, and I'd love to see the money go in that direction. And again, I appreciate the survey, but I'd like more transparency to it, that there are actual residents that are responding to it and, and are concerned about where the ARPA money is going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There are no more hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Let me just reiterate a point. I think, Ms. Frances, you made that this is coming back to council. Is that correct? And it's what date?
I'm going to jump in, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. We could bring something back to council if you direct us to. Ms. Frances was just pointing out that there is going to be detailed analysis of the free form comments that were allowed as part of the survey, and that will be available on the 25th. If you like, we can bring that back. We can just certainly also just provide it to you and post it on the city website, either way, or both.
Okay, but this is also coming back as part, as part of our budget too. So, okay. Councilmember Tom, thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. And so, thank you for the presentation and for the survey results, and I do look forward to seeing the survey results next week as well from the free form. That's a lot of responses, and I'm sure a lot of really great ideas. That being said, you know, I think we have a decision before us tonight of, of about $843,000, call it eight forty-ish, and how to program it. And there's, there is these fifty-one items on the Excel, and we've gone through them all. We've got the, in some of the survey inputs, not all of the inputs. You know, how to slice and dice this is, I think we could meet for hours and hours and many times and future meetings, and there's some merit to that, and I could support doing that. But I've also maybe boiled it down for me in a way of categories where we get that involvement and we get that deep dive a little at a time. So my recommendation is that we give, I have numbers, $250,000 to what I'm calling safety. So city staff, Ms. Halaby's department would get $250,000, and I, I would encourage items one, two, three, four, five, six, and fifteen. Those are very safety oriented, and I'll say them again, one, two, three, four, five, six, and fifteen on the list. And two fifty kind of gets there. It's two sixty-one, but I think you could shave ten thousand somewhere, eleven thousand. And then twenty thousand to DEI initiatives, which is twenty-two and forty-seven, the Changing Stations and the Coastal Trail Remembrance. Seventy thousand for beautification initiatives, which I look at as specifically item twenty-four, the downtown trees and stewardship, and I kind of want to change that item a little bit. I'll, I'll talk to that now, and that rather than say, I want to plant four cypress trees inside an enclosure that has no watering. I really think the beautification of the corridor of Lighthouse, if we could allocate $70,000 towards that and make that a part-time Public Works position, like we did with Kent Speed, we, we put him at the Purple Carpet, and he turned it around, you know, under his leadership. And for, you know, two, three years or more, he's really dedicated that in a part-time capacity. I think it's time for us to dedicate a part-time person whose main focus is the beautification of, of our, and I'm calling it like a steward of downtown. So whether it's recommending a tree here because there's water, recommending, you know, how to, how often to do pressure washing, how often to clean up the bird poop off of everything, you know, there, it's, it needs attending to regularly. So I put it as item twenty-four, but I want to change twenty-four and say, I think seventy thousand is enough for a part-time position for one to two years. And then 500,000 would be remaining, and the last would, I'd say, go to recreation and give it as a lump to recreation of all 500,000 and say, I, I'm a liaison to the rec committee, I already said it. They have many ideas. They're asking for well over, you know, a million and a half dollars if you added up all their items. But say you have 500,000, you don't have a million and a half. What is the priority? Reach out to the community, find out, should we do programming, like we heard from Ms. Beck? Should we do the traffic garden at Caledonia, the, the Pump Park, the Dog Park, the Skate Park? You know, for half of that, we could do the traffic garden, the bike parking behind Peppers, and the Elmarie Dyke as, as well. But I don't want to say what to do with that 500,000. I think the rec board would program it well and, and spend time thoughtfully on picking the items and working with the community to, to do it. So that equals eight forty, not eight forty-three. So as, I'll just repeat it as two fifty for kind of safety items that the city would tackle, twenty thousand for diversity, which includes the Changing Stations and the Coastal Trail Remembrance, seventy thousand for beautification idea of its downtown stewardship, which could include planting trees. I would hope it does, and then 500,000 to recreation. So, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the eight hundred and four participants. I did read the four hundred and seventy-seven additional comments, and they were very helpful, thoughtful, and specific. So there were multiple comments supporting a rental assistance program, childcare, skate park, and small business support. So I look forward to sort of that data being broken down more. So for me, you know, every year, the city, we put millions of dollars into streets and paving and sewer and infrastructure. That's a given. We do that every year. We have multiple grants available that are matched dollars, and that is always an ongoing investment. And when I look at our recreation program compared to other cities, you know, even small, Carmel, Marina, they far surpass what our offerings are. Our parks are great. Don't get me wrong. They're beautiful, but they're just neglected. And, you know, I go to Caledonia all the time. I go to George Washington Park. I sit on those horrible bleachers with like the, you know, broken stairs, and, you know, I used to, at Arnett Park, before the steps were redone, it was like a slip and slide, right? So, you know, with us being younger and having kids, like we are really experiencing the neglect that is happening in our recreation programming and parks. So I, I agree, you know, I think that it is fair to sort of divvy up the pot. I love the honoring of the projects from the various boards and commissions. That is something that I sort of had written down. I had different projects, but the same thought, which is, you know, DEI came to the table, BNRC came to the table, and the, and the rec department, you know, and I do want to sort of, you know, thank you for your work. And yes, like I want them to bring ideas to us, and I think that it's a very good faith that we, we fund those projects that are near and dear to our boards and commissions' hearts. So I have always advocated, since we found out we were getting this funds for recreation, I am still, you know, committed to that. I am disappointed that we don't get the 1.8 million, you know, but I understand that the city needed the one million, which is for capital improvement projects and salaries, you know. So we're, again, here's another million dollars that we're adding to the already millions of dollars that we invest every year in those projects. And so for me, you know, the ARPA is really an opportunity to do something special with this money. And I want something tangible that our community is going to benefit from, like the bike racks. You know, that's a great, that was actually one on my list too. And also, it, it goes with our complete streets. You know, so, so I like how also the, what you recommended lined up with our city council goals. So I just want the most money available to the recreation department. They have a fantastic inventory of all of the, you know, unfunded projects that year after year, you know, three years, almost four years on this council, it's the same unfunded projects. And so here's our opportunity, you know, here's the money from the sky to invest into recreation. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good comments. I'm enjoying listening to this. Actually, this is kind of like a buffet. We're trying to pick what we want to do, and I don't think we're actually going to reach an exact agreement on this tonight, but I'll just give, I'll try to do my simple version of it. I think Parks and Rec and Open Space, I'm putting it all together, and I'm saying, let's give half of the eight forty to that. And then let's give the other half to infrastructure improvements, safe route to schools, though specifically, I'd say the, the David Avenue sidewalk piece and the wig wag lights. That takes me almost there, but then I would probably add in the safety issues with the roofs and the water damage, and as many as we could get out of those. That's kind of what I, what I'd say.
Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm kind of alike mine with Councilmember Smith, and I also want to point out to council that this 1.8 million, we can spend all of it if we want. There's, there's nothing, it's not fated completely, you know, we can, we can program it however we want, and I would not advise using any of that money for salary increases. You would never use a one-time cash infusion to boost salaries that you have to have an ongoing stream to support. So I wouldn't be supporting that. So I think we need to think when budget time comes, we need to think with an open mind that all of that 1.8 is available, and then move from there. I do, you know, it, I think the residents, it's always, you know, listen to the wisdom of the residents, this ranking that they came back with, I was really glad to see, number one, improvements to public streets, intersections, and sidewalks, infrastructure, basically totally support that. Improvements to the water, recycled water plant, and I think what they mean by that is using the, the non-potable water to irrigate our coastal parks. Mr. Kupka spoke to that, so did Debbie Beck earlier. There's a big cost or a big payoff with that in using recycled water to minimize our Cal-Am or potable water usage there, and then increase funding for parks, and our, my colleagues have already spoken to that, and I totally support that. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and for collecting this data. I'm actually quite happy that the results came this way. It's, it shows, it's kind of like aligned with what we think as a body too. So I'm really pleased there. My, my view is that, first of all, like the ARPA funds money can be, it's not necessary to decide on what, where, or what the ARPA funds money needs to be used right away. All that we need to do is basically let the staff know that we want the ARPA funds money to be part of the fund, so, so we can make that decision. And then how do we allocate these funds? I, my view is a workshop would actually be better for the council to actually come to it together to discuss this as a workshop item, because I all, frankly, all thoughts are good. I don't dislike any of the thoughts, and, and I have some thoughts too. So my view is that in order for us to say, hey, which thought is rising up the tide here, maybe all of us need to get together and kind of like decide together collectively as a group what makes sense. So, and, but I would frankly, I would not disagree with any of the statements made by the public comment or by us, because everything is a priority to me, frankly, to, to, to speak. And there's one of the items in here around, it got three point zero funding to address homelessness and affordable housing. And really, if you look into the future, I hear of residents who are teetering on the edge, they're about to become homeless. Should we think about like having a fund so that we can help our residents actually live in, live in their homes? Because guess what? If they're, if they're driven out of their homes, that's a cost to the city. It is going to be an ongoing cost. Well, how about like helping them so that we don't, we do the right thing as well as like deter any future costs to the city? So I'm open to having some funds allocated for, towards housing, towards climate, towards environment, towards programs. But to me, really, this is a broader discussion that needs to be tackled on its own. So I would say that we should have a workshop. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Been listening to all the discussion, and we could probably discuss this till eleven, to come to a conclusion of where we should put all the funds at. I'm interested in, I'm great, I'm very happy that we have this survey done, but I heard Zen City, Jocelyn is, when was that date Zen City was going to come up the?
Next Wednesday, May twenty-fifth.
May, May twenty-fifth, so it'll probably come back to us in June, most likely. And I would want to wait to hear what Zen City's results are. And I also feel that all these projects are important, but Zen City, I would like to hear what their results are going to come back as. And I also would like, I mean, we could put money towards this, money toward that, money towards that, but I would like also to have the staff come back and come up with a plan of what we could then say, I'm just using this for example, for example, for you want skate parks and move the pickleball courts away and build pickleball courts, maybe that's, that's another item that could be discussed. But I, I really believe that we need to come back with this, with a staff recommendation, have them see where the funding might roll, and then we could make a decision if we want to move some funds or not. I also agree, as I said, we're not going to make a decision hereby, even ten o'clock, but I tend to agree with Councilmember Padori that this is not agenda, we should agendize this on, as a workshop or one, this is one item that should be decided upon. But let's wait for that Zen City survey to come back, and then we could decide on making a workshop out of this. I truly believe that. Thank you.
I'll echo the, thanks to everyone that ran the survey and participated in the survey. Really appreciated. It, there's not a dramatic difference in, in these numbers, but it does show a direction. So appreciate that. And in prior years, and I for one participated in complaints about getting no public input on the budget. Well, be careful what you ask for. We've got the public input, and as you can, you can see, well, just our conversation itself, I think we've, we've probably touched on about five, six million dollars worth of activities. We just don't have the money for. So I'll make another plea to people. I know at least one council member, and I submitted my wish Um, submitted, uh, my wish list for 800,000 to staff and. And if, if you do that, uh, I think that staff would be able to look at that and go, hey, I'm, I'm seeing. Um, some common themes here, um, and I'll just throw out quickly mine, uh, repairing roofs. Um, absolutely. Um, I like the idea of, well, I spoke last time about, uh, some chunk of money. For a sidewalk, uh, extending a sidewalk along David Avenue South, even though the. Total amount from Patterson to Montecitos, uh, out of the budget, but at least get there. Oh, the wig wag lights. Um, so safe routes to school. And I, I'd like to hear more about the ideas, uh, for, uh, park maintenance. And you know, the skate park is really attractive. The rec board got a lot of public input support for that. But it's a big ticket item. If we start thinking about a fundraiser for that. We did it for the, the children's pool, the Stillwell Children's Pool at Lover's Point. Might think about that. Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, mayor. And, um, you know, I appreciated council member Coletti's reminder that. Uh, you know, we did advertise, we are receiving 1.8 million. And yet we're selling ourselves short in a way by talking about, you know, 843 million. So. I think for me tonight, what I would appreciate is that if we could just come up with the number. And that way staff, and, and maybe it is 843, but you know, I mean, at, at least if we're asking staff to. You know, hear our wish list and, and try to come up with whatever. Um, you know, if we're talking about when we get to budget more than 843,000. I would want staff to know that, you know, and so for me, um. Maybe the city manager can speak to that, you know, how, how is that possible? How, how would we get more? Funds out of what staff is saying they want the million dollars for.
Mayor Protem McAdams through the mayor, uh, there are a couple of ways that can be done. Uh, let me take one step back. Uh, we, so we've been building the budget based upon the feedback we've received from this body. Particularly during the, the budget workshop that we had. And so the budget that's coming to you. At this time reflects 843,000 dollars for, for ARPA funding. Certainly that can be changed, but you know, then it's, it's just one pie and you have to decide how you want to. Divide the pie. It doesn't get any bigger. Um, notable in, in our increasing expenses outside of, you know, the proposed COLA. Outside of the, the modest salary increases for those who haven't received them in a number of years is a $400,000 increase in your. Unfunded liability bill to Calpers. That's a big part of that as well. Uh, you have, you, you can reduce funding to areas and that'd be one way that you can. Clawback money, uh, i- if you will, you can, uh, deviate from your established, uh, reserve policy. Yeah, you know, part of the reserve policy states that a portion of that is for financial stability. Or for, um, you know, exceptional expenses, you know, y- y- you can compromise that to a bit without jeopardizing. Fiscal health. Um, but again, we've, we've built the budget that's coming to you on the first based upon what we've heard from you. Over the last several weeks. So, um, we're at this point, um, we're coming to you on the first with a budget that reflects that. And we can change that during that discussion. And I don't know if what I've said to you is, is helpful whatsoever, but.
No, no, it is. Thank you so much. And I mean, I, and now you're, you're, uh, I'm remembering, you know, like we did have a very positive five-year forecast. You know, we're going to have some TOT coming online, um, some water entitlement sales coming online. So, you know, I am not intimidated or scared if we do up this. Um, and that wherever it's coming from, you know, obviously it would make sense for it to come out of the reserves. Um, you know, but if we do step it up to like a million or 1.25 million, I, I would be comfortable doing that and. Um, you know, I, I really, again, this is hopefully knock on wood. The only time we're going to be going through a global pandemic and receiving these kinds of funds. So, um. You know, I mean, at least from the meeting, uh, I would like for us to. Try to figure out the number and perhaps it is just staying at the 843.
I'm, I, I'll just echo Mr. Harvey's comments that, you know, we need to look at the big picture and the bigger picture. The whole budget's coming on June 1st. And so, um, I, you know, we're shining a spotlight on a small. Relatively small piece of the budget. So let's, let's not. Just spend all our interest and time and enthusiasm only looking at this one piece when we're, we haven't tackled the whole. So councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, mayor. So I, I'm going to maybe propose for tonight, like a combination of what everyone's sort of saying in that we, um, we go ahead and. Allocate the unprogrammed ARPA funds. Or whatever we need to do to allocate it so that it can be used in this, in this way. Go ahead and hit pause on where we allocate it. Don't make those decisions tonight. Hear the budget June 1st. Adopt a budget all of June, however long it takes. And then as soon as we're done with that. Pick an, uh, an, uh, maybe an off, maybe this location is great, but like an off-site workshop location, like when we do our goal setting. For this body and the public to participate in the workshop where we program this funding. And, and it will give, we'll have more survey results, we'll, um. You know, the, the, it seems like that would be the correct order in which we can do things. Um, so that was sort of a motion, but, uh, Mr. Harvey, what is the word to, that I need to say for allocating the unprogrammed? ARPA funds?
Wow, we, uh, councilmember Thompson through the mayor, we've been loosely using the term earmark. Uh, we've earmarked the money as revenue within your budget. It's unprogrammed funding that's available that we know that you're going to revisit. So it's apportioned.
Okay. So I would move that we earmark the unprogrammed ARPA funds in our budget as revenue. That we, or we're going to hear the actual budget in June. So just know that we're going to do that and then, um, have staff set a date. After the budget is approved and adopted for a workshop where we know the amount that we're dealing with. Whether it's 843 or a little more. And, uh, and then we work to program this fun, this money. That's my motion.
I'll think of it. Okay. Well, it sounds more like a staff direction to me, but I'm, I'm seeing, uh, a bunch of heads nod. That that's, that's okay. But if you want to make it a formal, keep it as a formal.
Of staff directions, fine if that's all we need.
Our city manager says yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay, everybody likes that. Thank you.
Sure, anytime.
All right, we're now on to item 13A, the diversity equity and inclusion plan subcommittee recommendations. Mr. Harvey and Ms. Kendell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of my great pleasures as I get to serve as the city staff liaison to the. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. Uh, they're a remarkable group. And, um, one of the amazing things that they have done outside of, uh, the recent work you saw from them, the, the city apology. Is, uh, they've worked together, uh, to come up with a proposed, uh, plan. Uh, on how to advance a DEI within the organization and in the community. And so tonight we have, uh, the vice chair, Mr. Juarez LaFevre and the secretary, Ms. Bowie. They're both here with us. We have a PowerPoint deck. And so I'd like to turn it over to the two of them at this point, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present, um, such an important topic to you this evening. Uh, Secretary Bowie and I have worked on this topic over the past couple of months where we've reviewed. The DEI plans across the United States and, uh, especially within California. With San Luis Obispo and their information being extremely helpful to our research efforts. I want to extend my gratitude to Secretary Bowie for her unwavering partnership and support in this fully collaborative process. I believe I'll be handling the slide decks, so let me pull that up now. So we felt important to share, uh, some current and relevant information around this topic. We wanted to start off with the city council court value of inclusiveness and just reiterate that statement. And that is that we cultivate an environment of trust and respect for all residents and visitors alike. We strive to ensure that our actions are inclusive and reflective of the, of the diverse community in which we aim to be.
We also wanted to go over our task force purpose, um, which you gave us as direction as we began our work last August. So first of all, we examine city policies, programs and practices. And it's through developing a community lens to promote diversity, equity, inclusion, racial justice and healing. Um, secondly, our purpose is to promote the participation of underrepresented communities, um, some of whom are people of color. LBGTQ plus, people with disabilities, immigrants and others. It's also to monitor change that occurs to diversity, equity, inclusion and racial justice within the city of Pacific Grove. And finally, our purpose is to provide feedback, guidance, strategies and recommendations to increase community engagement. By underrepresented groups.
We also wanted to go over the DEI task force powers and duties. And those are to act in advisory capacity to the council and city manager on the topics of diversity, equity and inclusion. And racial justice as related to the city of Pacific Grove. Recommend to the council adoption of such laws, rules, regulations, programs and practices on the topics of diversity, equity, inclusion. Racial justice and healing that relate to the city of Pacific Grove. So then we thought to ourselves, how do we go about discussing this? And we thought, again, going over some. Some, some, some basic and foundational, uh. Definitions of diversity, equity, inclusion. And so here we have, uh, diversity. Is recognition and acceptance of the differences between people's social identities, which can include race, ethnicity. Gender identity, sexual orientation, ability, economic class, religion, nationality, immigration status. Among many others and their intersections. Inclusion is more than simply diversity and numerical representation. Inclusion involves authentic and empowered participation and a true sense of belonging. Equity recognizes historical and systemic oppression and acknowledges that different communities require different levels of support to succeed. Achieving equity may require an unequal distribution of resources to address historical disparities and achieve equal outcomes. As versus equality, which is typically defined as treating everyone the same and giving everyone access to the same opportunities. We also felt important to really define intersectionality here. Which we have defined as describes how the identity, how identities and concepts cross and connect.
So if we value diversity, equity and inclusion, how do we act? What does our organization experience and become? What is our community experience and become? So here are some possibilities. We create, support and promote a more inclusive, accessible and equitable community in Pacific Grove. We recruit, retain and support a more diverse workforce, more diverse businesses and a more diverse economic base. But there are many other possibilities as well.
Why, why diversity, equity, inclusion in Pacific Grove? Well, for one, Pacific Grove is home to a diverse array of individuals and families. Diversity, equity and inclusion matter because we have a shared experience as individuals within the Pacific Grove community. And that experience is shaped by our values. Research has shown that inequality hinders economic growth. While inclusion promotes economic growth. We share prosperity, prosperity when everyone living in Pacific Grove achieves their full potential. Supporting diversity, equity and inclusion makes not only economic sense, it is also the ethical choice. The city of Pacific Grove and community partners can fulfill their mission by working to transform practices and to ensure fairness and opportunity for all.
So what would a diversity, equity and inclusion planning process look like? Um, first of all, following city processes, we're recommending that a consultant be hired. And I think that it is particularly important that a consultant occupy a neutral space. Be somebody that's not seen as having any particular agenda or viewpoint. Um, secondly, as the consultant begins work with the research and the information gathering. That's looking at everything from demographics and data, having surveys as, yeah, the city council just had reported on. But also meetings and also interviews, lots of different ways of getting that information. It's also important to note that the process of gaining the information, hearing from as broad as possible of the community. As can be done is as important as the final product or the final plan. Um, then the findings would be presented and the plan would be developed and presented. And we're recommending that the DEI task force be included before it's finally presented to the council. Again, that's looking at the DEI task force and our role as advisory to the council and to the city manager. Once a plan is approved, then it's implemented and then we recommend regular reporting and evaluation. With metrics that come from the findings. Um, the plan will really lay the foundation and the direction of. Diversity, equity and inclusion efforts for the city and the community. And finally, we also recommend that the task force have a role in the regular reportings and in the evaluation. As a part of our purpose as monitors, reporting back to the council. Um, so a strong DEI plan will be guided by a clear vision of diversity, equity and inclusion. And what that means to the residents of Pacific Grove, to the businesses, to the visitors. It'll be informed by those community members and those stakeholders and it will be. Um, become a place that will allow the city and the community to achieve meaningful and measurable results.
And so with that comes our recommendations. Our first recommendation. That city council adopt diversity and equity as core city values. The city hire a consultant to facilitate a diversity, equity and inclusion planning process that will. Collect information and insight about advancing DEI Pacific Grove and the city organization. Encourage community particip- participation and elevate the voices of underrepresented communities through learning sessions. Surveys, key stakeholder interviews and other community outreach. And finally, identify focus areas and develop recommendations for a DEI strategic plan. For all areas of the city organization and to increase awareness and understanding of DEI in the community. Ensuring a Pacific Grove that is safe, inclusive and just. Thank you for your time.
Do you have any other comments? Staff have any other?
No, thank you. We want to let that stand on its own.
Okay, so now we'll go off the public comment. Anyone here wishing to speak, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, councilpeople and city staff and residents. My name is Vincent Tumanello. I'm a 46-year. Pacific Grove resident. That doesn't give me as much credit as people who were born here and generations here, but. Um, I pretty much know the town. I know a lot of people, some of you I've associated with outside of official business. I'm a little bit gregarious to a certain extent. And I'm a little surprised to find this item on the agenda, DEI. I would like to know, and you don't have to answer my questions now. I'm the only person here in the whole city who came for this item, as far as I know. I find that shocking, stunning and deplorable. Uh, if I hadn't taken the time to look over the computer, I wouldn't even know this was on the agenda. And I saw some related things. And I saw some related things in the consent agenda, which aren't even talked about. I think the community needs to know more about what's going on here. Where does this program come from? Who's initiating this? Is this being funded by the state, by the federal government? What is the necessity for this? I am not convinced that this is even an issue that should be part of the city agenda. And now let's include hiring a director. What's that going to cost? Hundred and fifty thousand a year? Hiring someone to facilitate these issues, which to me, I have to admit, I'm naive. I don't get it. You know, I've lived here for forty-six years. I've seen people come and go. I've seen different ethnicities, different religions, different sexual orientations. As Martin Luther King said, and I'm sure we all know, judge everyone by their character, not by the color of their skin, I'm going to add, nor by their sexual orientation, their religious beliefs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think in this town, we don't have a problem. I think we're welcoming. All of you, I know, I've never heard a bad word or discriminating idea or an exclusionary idea from any of you. And I find this quite shocking to find that we're discussing this here at the city council. This seems to be something that should be discussed somewhere else. So until I fully understand what's going on here, what it's all about, who's funding it, what the purpose of this is, where it's going, what kind of results we expect. I think we've already accomplished all their goals. We're welcoming, we're diverse. I don't know, maybe not diverse in some people's opinions. I don't know how far that goes. So I'm a little stunned and I'm a little shocked to see that we're even addressing this issue. I got thirty seconds left. Did I have anything else I want to say? Oh yeah, I'm really interested. That nice little format that they had up on the screens there, the little list of objectives and values and goals and so forth. Where do I get a copy of that? I'd love to look it over and I'd love to find out more about the DEA and what it's all about. So please, if anyone has any way of facilitating that for me, I'd love to be educated into it before I give any further comments, because I may be totally off base. That's my basic local residents' take on life, society, culture. And now some new thing called DEI. Thank you very much.
Do we have any one in our virtual audience wishing to speak?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Michael Ipsen.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think it was a very informative presentation and it laid out the issues which the city of Pacific Grove faces. I'm sorry that the previous speaker hasn't encountered some of the things that have become apparent over the, over the many years in the past. The issue of the Chinese village is just one example. But if you talk to other people, you'll find that there are many people of color who feel very uncomfortable. I was speaking with a long-term resident just over a week ago who spoke, was sitting with a Hispanic woman who said that she was afraid to walk on the streets because she felt that she was discriminated against. So I, I, I think that what is laid out here is a very good way to begin to look at this and to address the questions that the previous speaker brought up. He's not aware of some of these things. And that should be brought out. And I think that this policy is one that will do that. It will help the city of Pacific Grove to continue to progress. It will inform people who have not encountered it. What is lying below the surface? And this is, this is the problem in many places in the United States. It isn't maliciousness, it's a lack of information. So I applaud the work of the DEI task force. And I think this is something that the city council should pursue aggressively to, to make Pacific Grove achieve all of its potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Cohen.
Welcome.
Hi, it's Janet Cohen. And I'm just going to talk. I don't have something prepared. But I think the DEI task force has done a wonderful job. I really appreciate all the work and that you've done and all the research you've done and the careful thoughtfulness you've done. And I'm kind of sad about the first speaker. I think maybe I know you from the past somewhere. I'm sure I would if I saw you. But you know, I'd like to try to convince you otherwise. It's, but speaking to his point, there is a good side of PG that really, most people do want to be inclusive. So I am hopeful in that way. I really think people really do. And, you know, just kind of don't know what to do and, or don't think about it too much because they, there isn't major obvious conflict going on, you know? So it, it, it appears like, oh, we live in the Shire and everything's good and yay, yay, yay. Which I think in a lot of ways, we do. But it's also a consciousness that we need to raise because it's, it's, we don't live in a really insulated world, you know? The world is out there, unfortunately. And it's, it's just, you know, look at Ukraine, look at, it's just really, the division in our country right now is, is so high. So I think your efforts are really, really helpful for me and I really, really appreciate them. And I really hope city council adopts this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani.
Welcome.
Good evening, or good night, I guess, is, this is Tony Chiani. Thank you for bringing the DEI program forward and doing it directly in full light of the council's chambers. Please embrace the recommendations before you tonight. And now is the time for you, for you to provide your leadership to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to encourage the first speaker to do his best to make the time to attend. I mean, I think they're still only online, but attend some DEI task force meetings because the work they do is hard work, very important work, very sensitive work. And, and it's, it, it's really so impressive to attend their meetings and experience the respectfulness and, and you know, the, the issues that they are, are dealing with and doing such amazing work when there are only five members of this task force. And I would, that means when they create subcommittees, of which they have many, there can only be two members on the task force. And, and I would hope that when they are continued and become a full-fledged committee or whatever it's going to be, that, that there might be seven members. But in any case, they're doing such a phenomenal job. And I certainly hope you will support their efforts and approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised. Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion, Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you Secretary Kim and Vice Chair Edward for doing a fantastic presentation. I, I fully support this. But I do have a question about the consultant and maybe Mr. Harvey could explain that to me. If we recommend, which I encourage a consultant, but don't we, we have to put, get a request for proposals. Is that correct, Mr. Harvey?
Councilmember Emilio, through the mayor, right, I might suggest either an RFQ or, or an RFP process. And as you can see from the presentation put together, one of the great things that they've done is they've kind of laid out what you could be looking for. So it's really, it's really there. And we could post that and, and determine a timeframe and then we'd have something to bring back to the council if you wanted to proceed in that way. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that sounds fine with me.
Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has there been any estimate of what the cost would be for the consultant? To do this work, I assume there's, the scope of work is defined at this point. Is that right?
Councilmember Clitty, through the mayor, no, there has not been any estimate of cost. One of the things that we don't know at this point is, you know, whether the city council wants to embrace all of this, a portion of this or add to this. And so, once we have some type of direction, we can, if you like, come back with it, with an estimate for soliciting proposals or qualifications. Or we can just simply solicit and bring back what we receive. Either way, thank you.
Well, I think we should flesh out a little better what the scope of work would actually be. And that, and that'll help inform what the cost would be. I don't think we're there tonight. But we could, we could pursue this further.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Secretary Bowie, Vice Chair Juarez-Lafere, for bringing this item together. I, I'm, I'm in support of this item in general. I, I, I would like to know in your research with other cities, et cetera, how long does this plan, I mean, so that we're proposing to hire a consultant. Typically, the consultant comes in, develops a plan. In your experience by research and through your research, was there a timeframe or of how long does it take to develop a plan like this?
If I may, Councilmember Pedori, San Luis Obispo was perhaps the closest entity that did a planning process similar to this and their community was similar to ours. And I would say it probably took six to nine months working with a, a, a community working group that included council members, staff, community members and so on to, that was led by consultants.
Okay, thank you. I know for a fact that if Secretary Bowie is on a subcommittee, it's going to be super well researched. So thank you. The, so I just wanted to let the council know, so this is not a position where it's going to be a full-time consultant going on annually. It's really a part-time consultant and really not for the entire year either. So it'll be semi-annual or maybe even like six to nine months is the timeframe that we're looking at. My, my view is that we need to support this. My view is that to, to Councilmember Clitty's point, there is a, when we do advertise for an RFP or an RFQ, we just need to narrow down some points. So my view is just recommend staff to come back with, to council with a recommendation that states that this is the description that we're posting for an RFP framework, so to speak, so that council have, can, can have a better discussion on this and move this forward. Thank you.
Mayor Patton McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And this Monday morning, I participated in the first ever City of Pacific Grove Diversity, Equity, Inclusion All Staff Training. And I'm very grateful for that experience. I support this. I support going out for either RFP or RFQ and really, you know, let the DEI experts tell us, you know, what steps we could go and the direction we can go in. And you know, really, as far as that goes, we could ask for sort of like a low end and then a high end, you know, and just really, I, I believe in trusting the experts and they have done this. So research our city, our demographics. We just have census data come out pretty recently. So I think it's a good time to, for this endeavor and for this consultant. So, and thank you so much to the DEI for their work and Councilmember Pedori. I am beyond impressed by the amount and level of work that just keeps coming from this group. So, and Vince, I will be reaching out to you. I, I would love to give you some information and, and talk. I, I think, you know, it's, it's important to have these difficult conversations, right? And, and I think that that again is part of this, this exploration and this journey. So I am just so proud of this council and the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the, the plan put forward on the presentation tonight was really well done. I, I understand. It's very clear. And so I don't think I would want to augment that, but I don't think we really need to. If we're going to go to an RFQ process, we're going to get, you know, some more input on that, the overall plan that you've set forth. So I think that it's a good, it's definitely a nice start, the, the presentation tonight. And definitely a step towards making progress on this. And so I will support going out for an RFQ and trying to find the correct expert to help with this endeavor. And then, you know, carefully weigh what, what is brought forth by that person and by that business or entity and organization. And, and also the input of, of you all, the committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support this item. Absolutely was, am ready to adopt the core values that were laid out. So thank you for those. They're, they're very clear and fantastic. You know, I kind of see this as the city formed the DEI. All of you, five of you, you're working really hard and, and overtime. I feel like it's one of our boards and all our boards and commissions work overtime, but they, you know, at times they, they need a consultant and need an expert. They need somebody to come in and who, who can help with, you know, especially in the beginning phases of laying this foundation and laying the groundwork. So that's what I feel like you're asking for. There, what I keep hearing is that the agendas for the DEI task force are long and involved. And rather than go out and play a game of whack-a-mole of what, you know, what to tackle, when, where and first, I think having a consultant who's done this before at a city level in a public space is a, is a fantastic idea and absolutely necessary. So I fully support getting a consultant to help lead this effort. And I don't know, sure, I'll look at a RFQ if, if, if we think that, you know, needs to happen. But I'm, I'm also happy if the DEI task force puts forward an RFQ, interviews the folks and hires the person that I think is going to guide them the, with what they need. So I don't need to look at the RFQ, I don't feel like.
I also support this and I like to nail down some numbers, a budget. I want to throw out thirty thousand dollars. I think that's a reasonable amount. If we go out with an RFQ or an RFP without any money. When I, when I see this, oh, and I forgot, I want to thank Ms. Bowie and Mr. Juarez-Lafere for bringing this forward. And I think when it, when they, I'm looking at the slide, diversity, equity and inclusion planning process. I see the second figure there. It says data, surveys, meetings, interviews. And that could be as small as or as large as one wanted. So that's my intent of throwing out thirty thousand to provide some, a maximum of thirty thousand to provide some backstop of where this whole process might go. I'm assuming that the consultant, well, I won't assume. I'll ask, who will the consultant be taking work direction from?
Mr. Mayor, I, a couple of things. I would recommend that the consultant take direction based upon general guidance provided by the DEI task force under my lead or my designee, so that it's a city staff person. But operating in an umbrella provided as far as what we're trying to accomplish from the DEI task force. That's what I would suggest. But certainly I'm open to whatever.
So from what you just said, I, I would think that makes sense. The DEI is providing advice to you and this person, you're providing the management oversight for the person. And so it would be part of your budget. you're providing the management oversight for the person. And so it would be part of your budget.
Mr. Mayor, we could do it, we could do it that way. Sure, that, that, that would work. Um, and so if I could just ask a follow-up question, I, I think this is something that we're going to need a, a detailed motion from the council on it, and I'm happy to have a discussion how to put that together, but I want to make sure that we get it right, uh, when we move forward from this item.
Okay. And as far as the timing, I like that question too. I heard six to nine months. As someone who's always said, this is how much time I need to accomplish this task, and it always takes this much time. I suggest at least a year, um, to, to do this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. May I ask one more thing, um, just for context, and I I'm not trying to drive up costs of things, but when speaking with the San, City of San Luis Obispo and, and Ms. Bowie and Mr. Juarez-Lafevre can correct me here, but they're, they're obviously a bigger organization than we are, both budget-wise and, and employee-wise considerably. I understand that. I believe they spent a million dollars, if I remember the number, it might have been one or two million on their entire effort. And I'm not suggesting we're spending anywhere near that, obviously. But I, I wonder if maybe we can structure things where we solicit qualifications and/or proposals and, and, and they're itemized to a degree so that we can decide which are the most important and which are the less important, because I, I worry a little bit if we say, you know, we're gonna spend no more than thirty thousand dollars. If you might exclude some things that you might be interested in, that you don't know that you're interested in, does that make sense? You don't have to do those things, but if you have a menu from firms or from individuals, breaking down, you know, the various costs, that might give you some flexibility and, and some options, just a thought.
So, um, if, uh, what I understand you correctly, then to put out an RFP and then come back and ask for component costs of the different activities. Assuming that the, the respondents would understand, hey, this is Pacific Grove. We're not gonna have a million dollars for, for this process and, I'm seeing some, some head nods in that direction. So the money part wouldn't be, we wouldn't be locked into this. We'd come back, DEI Task Force could look at the results, provide their recommendation, and come back to council. Yeah. Councilmember Emilio.
I'll give it a shot on a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, number one, if the city council adopt diversity and equity as city core values, and the city hire a consultant under an RFQ to facilitate a diversity, equity, and inclusion planning process.
I'll second. I'll, I'll start off the, we're, my suggestion was do the RFQ, they, that's the action, is to do the RFQ and have it come back, and then we decide about hiring.
Correct.
But your motion was go to hire now.
No, no, no. I, I meant to get an RFQ on the, uh, consultant. You know, I'll, I'll repeat it. The, the city council adopt diversity and equity as city core values, that's my motion, and that the city, um, gets an RFQ.
Issue an RFQ.
Issue an RFQ to facilitate a diversity, equity, and inclusion planning process.
Second. And, uh, second by Councilmember Pedori, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, looks like we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right. Onto item thirteen B, prohibition of time shares. Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, your honor. I have a few slides that I would like to have put up, and then I'll be as quick as possible. Thank you, Sandra. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, what this is about is basically trying to understand where we are on time shares within the City of Pacific Grove. Uh, in nineteen eighty-two, citizens put forth a ballot initiative that was adopted uh, at the November second nineteen eighty-two election, and, uh, measure B is what they voted on, which in part prohibits time share projects within the city. Uh, measure B was then later codified after the election under zoning code chapter twenty-three dot four-five. Uh, next slide. Uh, these are a couple of the provisions from, uh, measure B dealing with time shares. Basically, it states emphatically that time share projects shall not be permitted within the city. And then also can, which is, they were very smart when they did this, they included an intent uh, of what measure B was meant to achieve, and it is also the intention of this chapter in prohibiting time shares to avoid the conversion and loss of the city's residential stock and character. Next slide, please. So time shares are prohibited. Uh, zoning code definition should be better tuned to, uh, current state law and local conditions. I've fully fleshed that out in the agenda report, uh, whereby definitions currently reference a section of state statute that was repealed back in two thousand and four. So we've got some house cleaning, uh, to do, and we also have to address the local conditions, uh, as regards new marketing schemes, uh, for time shares, uh, such as Picasso. So in conclusion, we are not changing the law. We're simply making sure that our definitions are accurate and fulfill the intent of measure B, and that's all I have.
Do we have any public comment? In person? No? Our virtual, um, audience?
Yes, uh, we have two so far. Hi, Janet Cohen.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Janet Cohen, and I'm definitely supporting this and, um, have a lot of history with it, and I really appreciate that Councilmember Coletti is, you know, shoring it up and making it come forward again in a way that will keep benefiting the commit, the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence Endimer.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is kind of one of those house cleaning jobs that must be done when it doesn't even conform to state law at this point, but we sure don't want more litigation and more absolute atrocities like Picasso moving in and change, trying to change our definitions in town again. I mean, this is, this is kind of just another way to get around what our city's about. And so I, I support this. Let's clean house. Let's solidify it.
Tony Chiany.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. In the nineteen seventies, time shares, uh, literally destroyed so many small neighborhoods, big cities, especially in the coastal zone, and also just small coastal towns. It changed the character, changed the nature of them, uh, changed the intensification of use. It's nice to see that you're going to update your plans and make sure that the laws are consistent with the state. So I, I support it. You should support it too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if I cut off, um, Ms. Inga. Inga?
No, she's, she's fine.
She had her hand raised again. I don't see any other hands.
Okay, um, maybe did cut. I don't. Do you want to try? Yeah. Okay. All right, bring it back to, uh, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Uh, this is, I think this is a great idea. And also the way it's recommended is go through Planning Commission. I think that's great. And, uh, looking at all that Picasso stuff was happening right near us, so, um, let's do this. I'm in.
Mayor Potem McAdams.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Coletti for bringing this. And, um, you know, one of my, uh, complaints to the city sometimes is that we're reactive versus proactive, and I really appreciate the proactiveness in this. Um, I do think time is of the essence. With Picasso, uh, and potentially other, uh, companies coming in already to both the City of Carmel and unincorporated areas of Monterey County. So they are here. Um, and I fully support this, and thank you for the well-written agenda report.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Coletti for bringing this. Uh, I'm in support of this item. I, I just wanted to comment that speaking of house cleaning and we were talking about ARPA funding, not a bad idea to maybe allocate some funds for cleaning up our code because it's been a while. So, uh, but, but that's all. I'm in support of this item. Thanks.
And I'll just add my thanks as well to Councilmember Coletti, and the point being that this is being proactive, preserving housing, which we're obviously short of. All right, are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Emilio.
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Coletti for bringing this forward. We just have a couple of comments, um, where the, um, does the, was the staff contacted in regards to, um, how many time shares we have in the community? I'm just curious. Do you know?
There's currently one time share project in downtown Pacific Grove. That is what created the impetus to do measure B in the first place. So, and I think there's somewhere around twenty-five or twenty-five or twenty-seven units down there. So as a result of that time share project going in, measure B was brought forth and then adopted by the voters. So measure, time shares are prohibited at this point.
Let me ask Mr. Harvey. Are you aware of, uh, any present time shares in the area?
Uh, Councilmember Emilio through the mayor, outside of, uh, the one in the International House Building, so to speak, that Mr. Coletti is speaking of. Those are the only ones that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, I think we're ready.
Thank you, your honor. Motion to approve the recommended action. I'm, it's late and it's written really well, so that's what I'm going with.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, closing in. Last item on the agenda, thirteen C, consider transitioning from six to four council members. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you. I think there's some slides for this as well. And while those are coming up, I want to thank Councilmember Tomlinson. We, uh, we had conversations, we got the ball rolling, thinking about this. We were, uh, thinking about it, uh, uh, kind of separately, but then we kind of got together on it. So thank you for that. This is a city charter, a proposed city charter amendment to transitions from six to four council members. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is kind of a breakdown of what the city charter, uh, is all about. It's the express will of the people on how to organize our local government. It is our constitution. Uh, Pacific Grove became a charter city in nineteen twenty-seven, and the last amendment was in two thousand and seven. The city charter, uh, since its inception in, uh, nineteen, since nineteen twenty-seven, has continuously required the city council be comprised of six council members and a mayor. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, uh, when Pacific Grove Incorporated, it was originally governed by a five-member board of trustees. Uh, then, uh, in nineteen twenty-seven, it was kind of popular at the time, uh, Pacific Grove, uh, adopted a charter, proposed and adopted a charter. Uh, and that included, uh, at least in the final, uh, proposal, a seven-member council. However, the conventional wisdom at the time favored a five-member council. And, uh, we borrowed, our current charter actually is based on a, a model charter that was put, uh, forth by the League of California, municipalities, and we also borrowed heavily from Monterey's nineteen twenty-five charter, but not in the case of the number of members of council. Next slide, please. Conclusion, a seven, seven-member council is truly an anomaly. And this was part of the research. I wanted to, I really wanted to understand why, why seven for Pacific Grove? Well, we're just out there in the right field, as it were. We are an anomaly for a city of our size, uh, then and now. And I think after nearly a hundred years, it's time to check in with voters, uh, to see how they want their city council organized. Uh, in the end, a charter amendment can only be, uh, enacted by a vote of the people. And, uh, I will just throw this out, a, a five-member council could be more effective and efficient. That's kind of fleshed out a little more in the agenda report. And then finally, uh, the last slide, please. Oh, no, excuse me, second to the last slide. This is kind of an implementation. This was something, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson and I were kind of like, okay, how are we gonna implement this? And we, uh, got a graph together, uh, and a chart that kind of shows what the municipal election sequence will be to implement this. So in the upcoming election in November, we'll be electing three council members to four-year terms. Then in twenty twenty-four, we'll be electing two council members to two four-year terms, and one council member, uh, to a two-year term, such that in twenty twenty-six, uh, we're fully at four council members. And that is the goal. So in four years, we transition from six to four council members. And then the next slide, please. So this is kind of getting back to the point I made earlier about this whole five-member council was, it was basically the conventional wisdom at the time. Uh, certainly, as I mentioned in the agenda report, nearly ninety percent of all the cities in, in California have a five-member council. And at the time, the proponents of the charter even contemplated a five-member council, so, and this is kind of an excerpt of the early draft written by Julia Platt. So that concludes the presentation.
Do we have any public comment? If so, please come to the podium. Okay, it looks like our in-person, uh, audience is not going to speak. How about our virtual audience?
We do have three hands raised. Dixie Lane?
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm here this evening to voice my objections to both the process and recommendation to reduce the number of council members from six to four. Admittedly, I haven't had the time to fully consider and research the effects of this recommendation, or pulled together a written response or a full-throat of verbal one, for this evening. However, first let me say that the bedrock of democracy is citizens' representation in its governing bodies. By decreasing the number of elected officials, this recommendation ensures a diminishing effect of Pacific Grove's residents' representation. Reducing the numbers of the council members chips away at the very core of our representative democracy. This was the very core of the heated discussions regarding whether PG should have a city manager charter. And when we adopted the, the city charter, or when we had five members representing the population in Pacific Grove before the charter, the population was thirteen, thirteen hundred people. Today, it's over fifteen thousand. So, um, I would suggest instead we create precincts or districts with a council person elected within each one to be voted in by their precinct or district's population, just as our federal, state, and county governments are organized with the number of council members and precinct districts tied to the number of residents. Thereby, as the number of residents in each precinct or district grows or shrinks, so do the number of council members. When the founders landed on six council members and a a mayor, basically seven council members, the population had not yet reached five thousand, and it has tripled in size by then. Second, I am concerned that the information provided to make the decision to decrease the number of council members is incomplete, and the type of information that is referenced- and the type of information that is referenced is insufficient. I particularly take exception to the reference made to the W.R. Holman memoir. Memoirs fall, memoirs fall in the, in that divide between fiction and nonfiction. In this case, this memoir is memories of a ninety-five-year-old W.R. Holman, as told to his caretaker. Heather Lazar did a great job of annotating his memories to supply context to Holman's memoirs. In fact, I am proud to say she used the journal I wrote on the Holmans for the, for the Heritage Society as one of those nonfiction sources to annotate his memories. I do have an abundance of documents and a plethora of newspaper articles and advertisements and opinion pieces that, from nineteen twenty-seven, that fully describe how our founders worked together with a very engaged population to develop the charter. We only have a city manager charter by forty-four votes. In fact, that was the, that was the core of the discussion, whether or not the city should have a city manager charter or not. They felt that the seven people that
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else?
Tony Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think this is a good idea, going from six to four. And the reason is, I believe, a smaller number of council members would actually provide better representation. You know, we have, what, two senators for every state? And it seems to me that, as compared to the number of representatives in Congress, I've seen towns like this, and even bigger cities, with large, with lots of neighborhoods, have a few council members, but then have community planning associations, in our case, maybe neighborhood planning associations, that would be a better place, a more local place, for neighborhoods that are very distinct, such as in Pacific Grove, to get together, formulate their ideas in informal settings, and then take those to the council. So my suggestion would be to reduce the number of council members, but also consider establishing neighborhood planning associations that would be able to communicate with the boards and committees, especially the Planning Commission, and also directly with the city council. And you would do that by setting it up through a resolution, authorizing the neighborhood planning associations, giving them some legitimacy. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. And Mayor?
Welcome.
Thank you. I couldn't unmute. A few years ago, I might have felt like Dixie Lane on this, but no. It's ridiculous that we have so many council members. That's come out time after time with, in the salary discussions, that we are probably the only city around, I mean, to have six for fifteen thousand people is just, we are, we're an anomaly at this point. And just think, council members, with, with only four and a mayor, we might actually get through an agenda in time, at the end of the evening. So and if we go to districts, which, you know, could be state mandated, can you imagine having, how in the world would you divide Pacific Grove into six districts? That would actually give us less representation and less, less democracy. I mean, anyway, I think that the time is actually right to make this right-sized. And I don't think that the political split in this council is going to change any by having four members instead of six. I think there'll still be split votes all the time on this. And with, you know, with a mayor, so whether it's seven or five, you know, it's still going to be there. And I would urge you to go ahead and kind of really discuss this, think about it, because I think the time is pretty ripe for this charter cleanup. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised. Mr. Mayor?
Council discussion, Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and yeah, thank you, Councilmember Coletti. I, this is a subject that has been sort of, I've heard it since the day I decided to run and became on council. I think Councilmember Garfield brought it forward. I've had some discussions offline where, you know, way, going way back, just to finding out the why. How come there are seven of us? And then, you know, and then we contemplate, how can we be more efficient? How can we get through agendas, all these things? So for me, I just was ready to have this conversation with all of you and with the public's input. And I brought it up to Councilmember Coletti, and he apparently was having these same thoughts over at his house. And, and so together, he did a majority of the work, admittedly, so thank you. You'd thought about it a lot more than I had. But I, you know, ultimately, we have to go to the people to vote for it. So I, I want to support the, the city and the staff to go forward and figure out what kind of documents are needed, so we can put it on this ballot. It's not something that happens overnight. So even if it is voted for and voted in, you see the, the progression plan. It will take a few years. And I, I even like the, I, wait, there was a couple of different ways to slice it. The reason I like this chart, I'm going to steal your chart, is because it lets this person, this one person know in the twenty twenty-four election that I'm going to only run for a two-year spot. And nobody is sort of cut short, you know, it, it, it's a known quantity, you know what you're doing. And I don't think it's a negative to, if, if there may be plenty of people who are interested in running for council, who a two-year spot is very appealing to. So it's, it's a unique offering, and I think this is an elegant way to get down from, from six to four, where nobody's cut short or cut out of the pattern, or any, whatever you want to say, catchy phrase. The, and then as far as just, you know, why plenty of cities in, have five council member, or five, a team of five, that do a lot of work. Bigger cities than us do more work than us. Eighty-nine point four percent of the cities in California have a five-person body. Only six point four four percent have a seven-person body, which means there's four or five percent missing there that have more than seven. God bless them. But the, so I think we, it's time to, to go from seven of us to, to a total of five. I think we'll, we'll have plenty of healthy discussion, plenty of community input. Staff will be more streamlined, I think, in, in not having to, you know, meet with all seven of us, you know, have seven bosses. Like, there's just a lot of arguments that we can talk about or not. I mean, it's ultimately got to go to the vote of the people. I would be voting in support of it, based on what I know now. Of course, I want to hear what the rest of you have to say. So, thank you.
Mayor Potem McAdams.
Thank you for bringing this item. I watched the meeting when Councilmember Garfield brought this to council, and she was met with crickets. It's like, it's like, no. Yes, I, I completely support this going to the voters. I too would vote yes on the ballot measure. I think that a common question that I get from other council members, you know, in the region, or that I meet at conferences, is, why do you have seven council members? And there really is no answer to that, you know? It's like, I don't know. I also think with, with the smaller number, it will better poise the, the city for district elections, which is, is the path. That's the future. And if you divide two point two square miles of the City of Pacific Grove by seven, I don't know how you could possibly do that. So even, you know, five, I think Marina had a bit of a challenge, you know, divvying out their districts. And so, you know, for me, this is really future thinking, and, and this is not selfish thinking, or not, you know, protecting our seats, or worrying about, what about, you know, my, no. This is forward-thinking, and this is the right direction for the city to go into. So thank you, Councilmember Coletti and, and Tomlinson. You have my full support, and I would love for this to be on November ballot.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very pleased to see this item. I, I've been thinking about this since Councilmember Garfield brought it up, and I, I was trying to think of a good reason to say no, and I was like, I don't really have a very good reason to say no to this. But hey, I think I did vote against it. It was crickets that night. But, you know, having enough time up here now, you know, all of our sister cities, our Board of Trustees all have five, and it, it works, and I think it creates a more efficient environment. I think there's less administrative delays, emails, email strings with seven people on them, email strings with the city manager and other staff members. And just time, I think the time in the meetings, I mean, we, we all do other things, so we're not here full-time. And so some of those larger councils, like Los Angeles, they, they have full-time jobs, so they might have fifteen council members, but they're also, you know, a city of millions, and they have a lot more time to work on things, and we don't have that luxury. So I think anything to cut down on the time in the meeting, anything to make it more streamlined would be great. So I think this also positions us for, I have a lot to say about this topic, but I'm not going to, because it was said so well in the report by Councilmember Coletti, and tonight by Councilmember Tomlinson, so I'm not going to pour it on. But I, I really have a lot to say about this. I think a lot about this, but I, ultimately, it's up to the community. And that's the best thing. The best thing we're doing is, after a hundred years, we're checking in with the community. We're going to see what they think, and then they're going to make the decision. So I'll be in favor of it. But that's, and it sets us up well for what's coming down the road. So, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. On this particular item, I'm familiar with, without any names mentioned, in other cities that have five, and they've had strife with five. But effective councils with seven members, including the mayor, creates a a more diverse candidate for the positions that might be open. There's also a diverse opinions and provides constructive suggestions to agenda items. I think that's very important, having seven members. This is where I'm talking about seven members, including the mayor. With seven, you're more sensitive to the Pacific Grove needs. I truly believe that. A perfect example, and I'm only using one of the many examples, is the Walk of Remembrance, there was only three council members there. And that, that's, that's how it was. Same thing with the, the good old days, the parade, there was only three of us there at the time. It, with seven, it also creates a brings a diverse opinion about, when you have to evaluate the city attorney and the city manager, you have a much more diverse opinion with the people that are on. Also, there's a lot of subcommittees. And some of us, I mean, I do, but I know some can't make it, and some do make it all the time. And I'll just use me, for example. I'm a member of the Traffic Commission, an MST Board, which is an outside agency. You have to remember that. The Museum Board, and prior member of the Recreation Commission. Also, I mentioned about the, there's over fifteen committees, approximately over fifteen committees, that includes Planning Commission and everything else. And with seven members, you do have, you can be diverse on representing those, those members. In other words, with, with only five members, it's not going to be evenly distributed. I've already talked about that. I think, these are the reasons why I'm, these are just some, several of the reasons I feel that we should stay with a total of seven members, including the mayor.
Councilmember Pedory.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers Tomlinson, Coletti, to bring this to the table. I, I have a different opinion altogether on this. The, first of all, representation, I think, as, as technically, I'm the sixth member of the board. I, I look at my own experience, and really, that is going to be the standard moving forward. I, I know there are a lot of cities with five. I, I get it. I, there are a lot of cities with seven and so on. Well, i, i, if we really want to make council effective, I can argue, why not a council of three? Why five? Well, let's do three itself. It's not a big city. But the, the, the point really is representation, and I think where, I look at my own experience, I would not have been elected had, had this not been a council member of seven. I believe Councilmember Smith would not have been elected either. And, and that's, that, that's really like, like one of the, one of the key points is representation. The other thing, too, with five-member council is, when, when, when you when you're an incumbent, it's really easy to get back onto the council. And I, I feel that if you go back to five, the incumbents are going to just run the show altogether. And there's not, not going to be a chance to have somebody else come on the council to provide a diverse opinion. And, and the final thing I want to comment is, this is a, this is a piece of history. We're talking about a hundred-year-old history, and I'm kind of surprised that we're just taking action on a hundred-year-old, old history without any survey from the public. As far as I know, that's, that's what we've been doing so far. So I would, I would recommend first to survey with the community to see what their feedback is, before even deciding to go on ballot. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll just add that going to the ballot box is a survey. And so without further discussion, I think we need a motion.
I'll make the motion, your honor. I move that we direct city staff to return in July with all necessary documents for council consideration for placing a city charter amendment on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election ballot to transition from six to four council members.
Second thought?
Discussion on the motion.
I, I'm sorry, I meant to ask Mr. Laredo and Mr. Harvey whether or not, I definitely want to vote for this, but we, the timeline put in here may or may not have been conferred on with you. So is it possible to come back in July for the November election?
I believe there's more than sufficient time to come back. And Mr. Coletti has been conversing with me about this for the at least four, if not six weeks.
Okay, I, I had a feeling, but I just wasn't a hundred percent sure, so I wanted to give you a chance, in case that wasn't, wasn't the case, but it was so good.
I would just point out that I sent to all the members of council a PDF document to describe some of the second-order amendments that would, would be necessary, and I think we should include that as part of the motion, so that the city attorney has a full understanding of what, what articles are going to be actually amended. Well, I, I think that, I think the, well, maybe the city attorney can speak to it, but we had, we had a conversation where we talked about fully implementing it.
I mean, I, I would say that it might be encapsulated in my motion, but I'll ask the city attorney.
I believe that the, the only way I can possibly interpret your motion is to bring back all of the related actions that would be needed to go from six council members to four council members over time. And I believe what Mr. Coletti is referring to is that there are some other provisions that require a certain number of votes for certain actions, and that, those would be ancillary, but we, we would weave the solution to those problems into the package coming back to you.
Thank you. So I don't think any changes needed to the motion.
No, it was more of a full disclosure kind of.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Councilmembers Pedory and Emilio dissent. And that's our last item on the agenda. Thank you to And that's our last item on the agenda. Thank you to the public for, for being here. Thank you for our virtual audience and for staff and my colleagues. Everyone, have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.